Today in at-large seat nine, Ms. Jessica Johnson that is with us. So really excited to be back, to have you here and to be back in full fours. And so, thank you, Mr. Gaither. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the December 5th, 2022 board meeting.
So moved, second.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Cynthia Briscoe Brown, and second by Tamara Jones. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the special call meeting held on Tuesday, December 13th, 2022, Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023, and Monday, January 9th, 2023.
So moved, second.
It has been properly moved by Jennifer McDonald, second by Aretha Baldwin. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And with that, before we begin, Happy New Year. And so may I now entertain a motion to approve the January 9th, 2023 board meeting agenda.
So moved.
It has been properly moved by Cynthia Briscoe Brown, second by Aretha Baldwin. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Happy New Year, Dr. Herring.
Happy New Year, Madam Chair.
Will you please bring the work session items?
Yes, ma'am, indeed. And I echo again the sentiments of Happy New Year as well as welcome to Board Member Johnson. So, we have four presentations today. Our first, we will hear a performance and information technology update about our IT and data information group presented by Dr. Matthew Smith, Chief Performance Officer, Mr. Femi, sorry, Femi Aina, Executive Director of Information Technology, and Mr. Joseph Austin, Executive Director of Data and Information Group. Following this, we will hear an additional performance and information technology update, this time about our Innovation Improvement and Redesign Group presented by Dr. Matthew Smith, Chief Performance Officer, and Dr. Kevin Maxwell, Assistant Superintendent, Innovation Improvement and Redesign. Following these two updates, we will receive the monthly financial update and budget development update from Lisa Bracken, Chief Financial Officer. And then finally, today, we will focus on our sixth Monthly Student Outcomes Focus Governance or SOFG discussion. Today's progress monitoring report is our interim 4.2 goal within Goal Four, which is our college and career readiness goal. Dr. Smith and team, we are ready for your IT and data information group.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. And again, I'll echo the sentiments of a Happy New Year to everyone. Good afternoon, Board Chair Collins, Vice Chair Baldwin, members of the board. A special welcome to our new board member, Johnson, welcome. Good afternoon, Dr. Herring, members of the community, as well as our administrative staff. So before you today, we are bringing two updates. And that would, that will encompass the totality of the Performance Division. The first update is within the groups of IT and data and information. And the purpose of this update is to share progress made on key initiatives within the Performance Division. The takeaway, being able to share the strategic direction and future vision of implementation and the support of these performance initiatives. In this first presentation, as shared, we will focus on IT infrastructure, devices and system support, as well as updates from our data information group. Two presenters will follow me, Mr. Olafemi Aina, who is our Executive Director of IT, and Mr. Joseph Austin, who is our Director, Executive Director, excuse me, of data and information. With that being shared, I will pass to Mr. Aina, who will provide the updates for information technology.
Good afternoon. Board Chair Collins, Vice Chair Baldwin, Board Members, Superintendent Herring. My name is Femi Aina. I'm the Executive Director of Information Technology. And it's always a pleasure to present to this body and the public an update on significant initiatives undertaken by our technology team. None is perhaps more consequential than the work done over the last three years, especially as technology has become an integral part of the delivery of instruction in the COVID-19 era. Our update today will address several key areas and hopefully answer some questions you may already have. This year, we've developed a five-year technology roadmap that will help guide us through major initiatives that must be completed to enhance future learning opportunities for our students. This plan also takes into consideration the APS 5, as well as the goals and guardrails as defined by the board. To develop this plan, we have worked with our Strategy Office to gather feedback from our students, teachers, school leaders, staff, and the community on the top challenges and how technology can help to solve them. The plan's final version will be made available through the APS website later this month. And for your convenience, we will also deliver hard copies to the board members through the board office. We believe that providing a stable and secure backbone infrastructure is central to our ability to support our students and schools. This year, we have implemented an enterprise data warehouse system to help us aggregate data necessary to build the critical dashboards required for decision-making. To comply with Ray Baum's Act and Carrie's Law, we are implementing an enhanced 911 system across all of our devices. This system will allow any APS person to make a dispatchable 911 call from laptops and mobile devices. It also allows the 911 dispatcher to direct help to the individual regardless of where the call is being made. We've made several significant upgrades to equipment in our data centers and increased the use of the Microsoft collaboration tools, including Teams and SharePoint Online. To accommodate the number of student devices across APS, we're increasing the wide area network bandwidth to all schools from 1 gigabit per second to 2 gigabit per second. We have also enhanced our internet connectivity by upgrading our bandwidth from 20 gigabits per second to 40 gigabits per second. We're on pace to increase that even further by the end of this school year when the Georgia Department of Education provides us with additional internet bandwidth. Thanks to funding through the taxpayer-approved SPLAST and the federal E-Rate program, we have invested in upgrades to our network and wireless infrastructure across schools and administrative locations to support these bandwidth increases. Due to shipping equipment delays, we estimate that the project will extend to March 2024. We continue to monitor equipment shipment with our vendors and will revise the plans at the get more information. Finally, with the increase in bad actors targeting school districts across the country, we are reorganizing our team to implement a new security operations center. This will allow us to change our posture and proactively manage vulnerabilities across all our platforms. This school year, we distributed over 37,000 devices to students, including 6,500 hotspots. We also installed over 1,000 new LED panels in classrooms over the summer, which means that we started this school year with 100% of our classrooms having the new panels installed, and we have successfully replaced all the aging promethium boards. Last October, the board approved an additional $3.5 million to address the urgent additional device needs and challenges raised about device accountability. Thanks to that board investment, we have recently received the delivery of 7,000 additional Chromebooks for our students. Our goal is to ensure that every student has a working device while also implementing other measures to increase accountability across the district for the care and return of these assigned devices. Finally, we are, we have implemented processes for schools to request additional devices for new students and loaner devices for those students whose devices are undergoing repair. One central area of focus for us this school year is digital citizenship. And so, in partnership with our instructional technology team, we are enhancing our digital citizenship program. Data gathered from the Council of Great City Schools showed that this is one of the areas where we can make a significant impact as we work on increasing accountability for devices assigned to our students. We are also enhancing the parental consent agreement and the board policy governing the care and return of assigned devices. Emergency Connectivity Fund update, also known as ECF, is a $7.1 billion program approved by Congress in 2021 to help schools and libraries provide the tools and services needed for remote learning during the COVID-19 emergency period. The APS technology team applied for and was awarded $8 million in December of 2021 and another $1.4 million in June of 2022. Through this grant, we can provide over 12,000 iPads and carts, as well as 1,400 MacBooks and carts to grade levels from 1 through 12. In addition to exposing our students to technology platforms other than the Chromebooks, the devices will support an instructional technology-led partnership with EdFarm to promote coding in Apple Swift programming language and expand problem-solving skills. iPad and MacBook devices for grade levels 3 through 12 have already been delivered to the schools, while those for grades 1 and 2 will be delivered later in the year. In addition to this, this funding is providing 10,000 hotspots this current school year and up to 3,000 broadband connections through Comcast for households in the Atlanta area. The Lawson System is the backbone of business operations for Atlanta Public Schools. It is the platform that allows us to hire employees, manage and retain our teachers and staff, pay salaries, pay for items and supplies used, among other things. Over the last several years, this platform has undergone several upgrades to migrate to the cloud and add significant features to enhance departmental operations across the district. The subsequent major phases of the upgrade will require integrating parts of our operations into a simplified platform and also allow us to remove customizations that have been in place for over a decade. Finally, project managers from the technology team have been engaged in leading major district-wide initiatives, including but not limited to the Hazel Health Program to provide fast and convenient care to students, the Douglas Ninth Grade Academy, and the implementation of the Virginia Highland Elementary School. Thank you again for the opportunity to present this update to the board. I will now pass it on to my colleague, Joe, to cover the data and information team, after which we will take your questions.
Thank you very much, and again, once again, welcome, Board Chair Collins, Vice Chair Baldwin, Members of the Board and Superintendent Herring. Thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity to present on the data information group. My name is Joe Austin, proud Executive Director of the Data and Information Group. The Data and Information Group is comprised of three departments: Research and Evaluation, Student Information Systems, and Testing and Assessment. The Data and Information Group is responsible for the total life cycle of student data and is a fundamental component of our board goals and guardrails and strategic decision-making. Now, we're going to turn to our Research and Evaluation Department. Research and Evaluation produce the district-level reports that utilize student data. Our dashboards and reports are used to monitor progress towards strategic initiatives and inform decision-making. During the 2023 school year, the department's priorities will include the continuation of board goal monitoring reports to support the district's Student Outcomes Focus Governance Initiative. APS Insights and our public data website provide student data dashboards for our external stakeholders, while APS Graphs provides dashboards for our internal stakeholders. Research and Evaluation are committed to ensuring that all dashboards are continually updated in a timely fashion as soon as the Georgia Department of Education files are made available to us. NWA MAP will be updated in January to include both fall and winter scores. And I wanted to provide you with a snapshot. We have a quick and easy way to get to our assessment accountability data that is in APS Insights. It is in, is front and center of our district webpage. That button will take you directly to APS Insights without having to go directly through the Research and Evaluation page. So this should save our stakeholders some clicks. And next, we'll talk about the Student Information Systems Department, or CIS. The Student Information Systems Department ensures that data is safely and securely entered into our student information system, which is Infinite Campus. We do this with both fidelity and integrity. We take our role in protecting student and staff data very seriously in this era of cyber attacks and of identity theft. Our priorities for the 2023 school year include supporting schools through the state data collection and scheduling process so that we can maximize FTE dollars and support district innovation designed to improve student achievement and growth. I'd also like to point out that in the Parents section of our website, we have information on the Infinite Campus Parent Portal. And then our final department, which is Testing and Assessment. Testing and Assessment manages the administration of our district and state formative and summative assessments, and they are used to monitor and measure many of our board goals and strategic initiatives. Our formative assessments include NWA MAP, which is used to plan and inform instruction and monitor strategic initiatives. Summative assessments include Georgia Milestones, GAA, Access for ELs, and G-Kids. These tests measure students' mastery of the standards. Our testing calendar is available to families and all stakeholders in the Calendar section of our website. And at this time, we're happy to entertain questions.
Any questions? We'll start with Aretha, Aretha Erica, Tamara, and Cynthia. So we'll just go this way.
Hello, thank you for the presentation. I do have a couple of questions. My first question is on the emergency connectivity. And I just want for me to know, as well as the public to know, how does a scholar or family qualify to participate in this in terms of the hotspots and the broadband?
Okay, so we have-
How do they raise their hand to get this help?
So we have made the hotspots already available to all of our schools. We've given it to everybody, every student or family that has asked for it. In fact, we had representation during the Back to the School Bash. We had Comcast in the far corner, kind of qualifying families for the broadband connection. Unfortunately, we haven't seen many of our families leverage the Comcast broadband request as we expected, but we continue to push for it. In fact, we'll be working with the, with the Strategy Office to push, and the Communications Team to push more stuff out this year, because we have that fund available through December of 2023.
So then, would a scholar then tell their teacher, their principal?
Yes, that they need the connection.
So I hope you all heard that. If you need those, that, those resources, raise your hand. In terms of the APS Insights, I have a question about that. So I did see that you were planning to update APS Insights to include the two MAP screeners that we've had already for this year. Will that data be accessible on a school level and by subgroup? Or is it going to be looking at it, how the, like, how are they going to be able to break down that information?
So there will be district and school level data in that dashboard, yes.
And subgroups as well within those?
Subgroups, yes.
Okay, excellent. And then my last question is around Infinite Campus. And just, are there any capabilities that Infinite Campus has that we're not currently using that you think would be beneficial?
So as the name states, Infinite Campus, it is a highly customizable student information system, which makes it so popular. So there are features that always can be added or customized. But again, we have to be very cognizant of all the other platforms that we need to integrate when we make a change. And it's, so when we do make a change or we do expand its use, we have to make sure that we are very aware of the impact it has on other integrations, certain scripts that are already in place. And so when we, we do put something new in place, we are very, we test it very thoroughly to make sure there's not an unforeseen effect. So sometimes it's not as instantaneous as we like, but we are very cautious with a good intention.
Thank you.
Anything else, Aretha?
Thank you. Just a little follow-up on, I read when she asked about how we use an Infinite Campus. I think my question is more like on page, slide five, on the telecommunication. How are we integrating our APS app, which is our Atlanta Public School app, along with Let's Talk Infinite Campus, to message parents or in an emergency situation or with security changes? How is all that integrated into one system?
Okay. So many of these apps have features which allow us to communicate with families and with the public. I think the, I don't know specifically about the integration between Let's Talk and Infinite Campus, but certainly something that we probably need to look at.
So we can certainly look at that, at the potential integration between Let's Talk and Infinite Campus, and what that would entail.
So that's an opportunity, then, Board Member Mitchell? Yes, thank you, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that's good news. And to follow up on that a little bit, too, this is a question I've asked before. What's the status of integrating Infinite Campus in Google Classroom? So make it easier on teachers, because right now they have to enter in grades twice?
So we actually have completed that integration.
You have?
It is not as seamless as we would like, but very, very often, it is not between platforms. There are always, there are always certain limitations that you have to work within. But we are, you know, constantly trying to improve that immigration.
Okay, thanks. I have a couple more. And then, so with respect to the communication piece, we did hear at the Georgia School Boards Association during a piece on communication, one of the best practices from one of the districts that was presenting was talking about how they do, they pick one, and in their case, it was Infinite Campus, to serve as the vehicle that everything goes out to. So thank you for looking into that. What role do you see the data analysis can play? And I asked this with the superintendent when we were, with helping us with our attendance at the schools, because we've noted that we, through COVID, have developed, you know, a very high percentage of kids that are chronically absent, and it's just beyond the capabilities of the human personnel in a schoolhouse to be able to, you know, triage all those, you know, set all the flags, decide what to do. And this could be a role for data to really step in and try to help identify, you know, what students you need to go look into at different stages.
So we actually have several tools. So our very talented Research and Evaluation Team, they create Tableau dashboards, which provide a very robust visualization of the data, which is much easier to navigate than, let's say, a spreadsheet. So we provide that, which definitely saves our schools a lot of time, but allows us to visualize the points of concern or students of concern. Of course, in a very secure way, we're very careful with the rights that go out, of course. And that, that information, we have dashboard views for central office as well as building-level staff. And attendance data, of course, we also triangulate that with other student data to get a very clear picture of how the student is progressing through school.
I appreciate that, that it's good to know. My last one is an IT question about Hazel Health, and I really appreciate having that in our toolkit. Is that, can you get at that through my backpack? And is there an app for that?
I'm so not the Hazel Health expert.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Karen.
I'm not the Hazel Health expert, but I can answer that question because that has to do with our team as well. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our new board member. I'm Karen Black, our Executive Director of Communications. It's nice to see you here. I wanted to speak to the other question that you brought up, Board Member Mitchell. But Board Member Jones, we have, so Hazel Health is on its own platform, and actually, all of its content is hosted on its own server. So we have several areas where we highlight where to go, but it's not any kind of app that we control. But at the school level, the Hazel Health technology that is out at our school level is also all on their platform. Does that answer your question? Okay, great. I just wanted to take a moment to speak to your question about integrating apps and data with how we communicate with parents as well. My team is analyzing all of the different tools that we utilize now and figuring out how we can maybe compress, compact, or out of that toolset, pick the ones that are really best practice. And we've identified a couple of newer pieces of technology and systems that we should probably adopt instead of the three or four that we're using now. And within that, we're working to integrate the Infinite Campus data and do data agreements with every current vendor or new vendor that we have so that data will real-time update every night. So does that answer your question?
Yes, that's what I was looking for, because we have so many different platforms. So how do we combine them in one? But we still need those different communication channels, because people receive communication differently. So just having something for everyone to, that is comfortable with how they want to receive it, but then have it all streamlined in one platform.
Absolutely.
So that's what I was looking for.
Thank you. And the project we're in the middle of, we're taking all of that into consideration as well as the comfort level, because we have to be sensitive to our principals and our teachers who use a variety of different platforms from school to school. We don't just want to sunset something without getting community input and making sure we're making the best choice for everybody. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I am thrilled to hear about the 7,000 additional Chromebooks, the hotspots, and the other devices that we've purchased just in the past few weeks and months. I'm continuing, however, to hear about extraordinarily long lag times to repair or replace devices for students and the complete unavailability of loaner devices while they are waiting for repair or replacement. So I have two questions. The first one is, how are we improving the long lag time to get a repairable device repaired? And the second one is, how are we meeting the device needs of students when their device is being repaired or has been determined that it can't be and they are waiting on a replacement? There are a variety of answers to that question going around the schools from, oh, we want the PTAs to provide these, to provide loaners, to the school's supposed to do it, to downtown's supposed to do it. If you could just clarify that for us, it would be helpful.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll take the second question first.
Okay.
The short answer is, we do not ask schools to provide loaners to students. That comes from us. That comes from us. Um, I know that my team has provided one extra cart per school. A cart contains 30 devices, which allows us to do that a little seamlessly. Now, as to the, uh, failure rate of some of those devices, we have two sets of schools. 14 of our schools, four high schools and eight middle schools participate in the Verizon program, while the rest of the schools participate in everything else that we provide. Now, unfortunately, when the Verizon devices were first deployed, they came without the protective casing. So you would expect that you would have a higher damage and failure rate on those. But Verizon has since cured that. They've provided us with casing, and we're working with schools to retrofit those devices with the casing provided. So because of that, that could affect the, um, the delay in replacing some of those, um, devices. And then finally, Verizon provided us with a finite number of spares and also set a $300 limit on the repairs, which means that once the cost of repairing a device exceeds $300, they basically discard that piece of equipment, which means that we then come in to, um, to try and fill in that gap. So their number of, the, the, the response is very nuanced. I would love to understand more. I saw the email that you, you forwarded, and, uh, we've already visited Howard and a couple of the schools that you listed on the, on the site to make sure they're okay.
When we, when either we or Verizon determine that a device costs more than $300 to repair, does Verizon give us a replacement device?
Well, they provided us with five, approximately 10,000 devices, so 5% of available spares, which is only, you know, a couple hundred. And we, we blew through that very quickly because of the failure rate.
I bet we did.
Right. So, uh, and, you know, $300, the screen alone is over $300. So if you crack a screen or damage the motherboard, you know, they basically condemn the device. But, you know, not to, Verizon has been working with us. They've been very, very good about supporting our needs. So I don't want to make, make it sound like they haven't been helpful. They've been very supportive, uh, the whole way.
So, so the answer to the question then is, no, we don't expect schools or PTAs to provide their own loners.
That is correct.
Do we have a process for requesting loners?
Yes.
And who's, to, to follow on Areto's question, whose responsibility is it to raise their hand on that?
Right, so we have, we have a platform called Incident IQ. We have trained the schools on it. It, it's got built-in workflows that allow schools to very easily request for additional devices. And some of my team members are in the back there. They take those requests and then they fulfill them as they come in. So we, we can basically fulfill any requests that come in right now. Even before the 7,000 new Chromebooks were delivered, we already had some that we used to fill those type of, uh, loner requests. So we're constantly, uh, moving our van all over the Atlanta area delivering additional devices from school to school.
I know it's hard, and, and I'm not, I'm not trying to, to accuse anybody, but we have students who are sitting in classrooms where they are required to use devices. They don't own them and theirs is non-functional, and they've not been offered a loner. And so that impedes their academic progress.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, Board Member Briscoe Brown. That's completely understandable. And I think just revisiting with our schools as well, understanding the platform that we have, the understanding that we have the devices available for loner, and just making sure the communication is there, it's clear on how schools are able to request those. Because you're right, we, we never have the intention of impeding any, any of the student progress of the school. We want to get those devices into students' hands as quick as we can.
Maybe we need to revisit that, that process and just make sure that, that our schools and, and our students understand that.
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
Because they, they need to know that, that they have to initiate that process at their school level.
Yes, ma'am, that's a great point, and we, we certainly will.
My understanding is that this is mostly a problem in middle schools. A lot of high school students have their own devices, and elementary students, I think, don't generally take those home with them on a regular basis. So, and middle schoolers are middle schoolers. All right, thank you. And can we go back to, um, what was it? Like, the first one, lag time on repairs? I guess we, we talked about that with Verizon. What about the ones that are not Verizon?
So for the ones that are not Verizon, we participate in a program called Always Learning, which is, which includes five years of, of support on the HP Chromebooks that we provide. It's already paid for. So every time we have a, a device undergoing repairs, the vendor is required to provide us with an immediate spare while the, um, student's device is being repaired. So that, that, that process has been in place from the very first day.
And that one's working well. So the real prob, the real challenge here is with that Verizon program, it sounds like.
Yes, that I've seen, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, just, so I want to appreciate the responses and then I just, and, and the questions from, from all of our board members. The last two questions, just from a, uh, the lens of the classroom experience and students with or without devices on a daily basis. Part of the uniqueness of this transition or this intersection between teaching and learning and technology and device reliability. As, as I was framing my response for this, we don't want a student to be without the device. But I also want to balance that our classrooms are prepared to ensure that with or without a device, instruction and learning and mastery or, or work towards mastery still takes place. By no means do I say that to suggest it's not urgent that when a device is not in the hands of a student for any reason, that we don't prioritize that. I just wanted to, to insert into this exchange the balance of still ensuring that instruction is taking place. So that's really why I wanted to tap into the, the conversation. So thank you, Board Chairwoman.
Thank you. I have one more question on the Program, Program Management Office with the Districtwide Initiatives, which is slide 11. Just, uh, general curiosity along the, the Douglas Ninth Grade Academy. I saw how data was used to support that academy, but I'm curious how this design is meeting the expectations and how the implementation, um, has been, and is it aligned with, with what was expected?
Yes, ma'am, I'll take, um, I'll take that question. And so we have seen some examples of improvements in outcomes of students since the Ninth Grade Academy has been executed. Give you just a couple examples of that. Ninth grade out-of-school suspension rates have declined from approximately 5.5% in April of 2022 to 4.2% currently. So we've seen a reduction in OSS rates there. Ninth grade average daily attendance is up from 75.6% in April of last year to 88.3% currently. So we're seeing some, some increases in attendance. We've seen ninth grade failure rates decline almost in half from 52.7% in April of '22 to 20, about approximately 25% currently. And we've also seen a decline in ninth grade repeaters, about a 4% decline. And so I think that, you know, there are some lessons learned. Obviously, it, it's a short body of evidence, right? But where it's encouraging in this first iteration, this first cycle. Just like anything, when we look at our monitoring reports, it's a timestamp, right? It's this moment in time. And we'll have, once we get to the end of the year, we'll really have two years of body of evidence to compare, but it's encouraging. And I think that, you know, any, um, any schools in our own school system where we have seen, you know, particular challenges such as high suspension rates, that I think that that's, that's one piece, or attendance challenges, we're seeing immediately. And then even some of, we have only had one year to, to integrate some of the, like, STEM-specific academic learning there. But even with that, all of the problem, problem-based and project-based learning initiatives that, again, we're, we're really at the professional learning stage and the beginning of implementation, we're seeing that there could be positive effects in other places as well. Now, we're going to give it some time to study, but the, the initial results are encouraging.
I appreciate your preparation for that. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, I appreciate that question, too, because that was one of mine. And to piggyback on that with student outcomes, and obviously it's very new, the Hazel Health tool, but looking forward to seeing data around utilization broken down by elementary, middle, and high so we know how to better push it out. And I appreciate communications, talking about, looking at streamlining and what's working best. And then, yes, tying into student outcomes, how Hazel Health is improving student outcomes or what is the impact of student outcomes. So I don't know if you want to share anything now, but looking forward to even more in the future.
I think I can say receive, yes, ma'am. We'll, we take into consideration the way the data, how we can break that down and how we can connect its outcomes in the future. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Go ahead, go ahead. And then, yes, I think you were probably going to say the same thing, Board Chairwoman. And just a reminder of what Ms. Black was sharing, and that platform is managed by Hazel Health. And so it is a matter of us being able to secure that data. Not that we can't, but just want to name that in the space of the ownership of the data and the platform being used. Yes, ma'am.
And I think that's also the importance of understanding as we're asking questions about integration and access to systems, understanding those systems that are like truly independent from APS, like Hazel Health, contracts that we have, and what that data sharing agreement or data sharing workflow, I think you alluded to, looks like and understand, understanding that, which goes to, I guess, my question and also just a thought process on the communication piece, for families to truly under, you know, to truly understand and, and how are we communicating, you know, how are we communicating that? If Infinite Camp, if there, there are ways of, like, you know, Tamara's point, integrating Infinite Campus into Google Classroom, we know it's possible, but there are some big pieces that we know are not integrated or, or not able to overlap as easy. How are we communicate, how are we communicating that? Because I think it also sends a message as if it's not tight, it's not a tight process or we're, or we're not doing it in a, I guess, a tight, efficient way. And that may not be the case. It easily could be the overlapping of systems don't, you know, do not allow certain integration. And so my question kind of goes to the communication piece. How, how are we, uh, and not communication on the technical side, but the engagement side? Like, how are we communicating all of these things to our, to, to schools and to, you know, to community, how we can also help with that? When we think about promotion of the Emergency Connectivity Funds, a student may not know, well, let me go to my teach, yeah, let me go to my teacher and say, hey, we don't, you know, we, we can't connect because a whole, there's neighborhoods throughout this city that has little to no connectivity. So as some, sometimes that, that could be, that's just how things are. So how are we promoting that so people know that there, that resource, that resource is available? And also when it comes to the, you know, loner program and exchange of devices and repairing, I think it's important for us to also understand that this is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but our inventory isn't bottomless. Uh, uh, it's a finite, I'm, I'm, I mean, I just, because I think people think, well, if something break, I need a new, new laptop, buy five, close the business today. And I'm like, I, I, I think we have a limited number or we have an inventory in place. And so how are we engaging and communicating all of these things and so people understand?
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's a great question. And I think, I think we're, I'll start, and Mr. Ina, I'll allow you to, to extend on this. So one of the, one of the present, presentation slides, we shared about the building out of the, the five-year plan in IT. And Mr. Ina and his teams have worked strategically with Mr. Norvell and in the engagement team to engage stakeholders in ensuring that we are communicating that message. I think that the work that they engaged in in this past year, this is a natural extension of that work. There are kind, there, there's already been some, some buckets. There's been opportunities to, to engage, to provide feedback. And I think that is a way for us to just naturally extend and communicate the pieces of the plan and then answer those, those pertinent questions so that community members can understand how, how these pieces align. Mr. Ina, do you want to add anything to that?
Well, I, I was just going to add that our primary form of communication with families as it relates to student devices, connectivity, hotspots, and all the other things around it has been through the school to the students, right? To make sure that we're funneling the message through the principal and the, uh, school leadership. But as we start to look more at how to possibly expand that broadband connectivity outreach, I will be working more with the communications team to push the messaging out, um, you know, to the community as well.
And you mentioned, you know, different priorities when we're looking at maybe choosing what do we integrate first. So again, um, we look at student outcomes-focused governance, look at our goals, our strategic priorities, and we use that to determine, um, what particular tasks are going to maximize benefits to students. So we do look at what we've decided to do within our goals and guardrails and strategic priorities to prioritize our own efforts to make sure that we're delivering the maximum benefit to students and they're, they're getting our, our utmost attention.
Chair Collins, because I heard that some of your question also did pertain to my team. I just wanted to update you all on two different initiatives that I'm proud we're moving forward with, with full steam right now. This Thursday, we're training 52 and counting school-level communications ambassadors who we have now filtered, found, they've been identified, they're going to be getting their stipend. And they are going to go through a formal training and monthly meeting process with my team where we'll be able to, for instance, standardize a message maybe about device dissemination and repairs, right? So that it's more standardized across schools. So I'm really looking forward for my team to work with that team of 52-plus individuals. Also, we have acquired a tool called Peachjar. I don't know if any of you all have ever seen that before. Right now, we're just getting them onboarded, and then we have to do their data agreement. But, and I look forward to, for my team to demo that for you all sometime in the near future. It is a widget that can push, once again, more standardized flyer information and other tidbits out in an electronic format onto the individual school websites. So we're looking into many ways where we can take some of these messages and filter them into current and new places where, as you all brought up, people consume information in different ways. So we're, we're looking into all of that and working with these teams and other teams around the district to make sure that those district-level messages are getting into all of the avenues in which they should be seen.
Thank you, thank you.
But thank you, Ms. Black, because I really think that was the answer to the heart of the question. All of the responses were, but to have the specificity around what's upcoming out of communications, I think, speaks to some of what you were asking. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And last, Jen, and then we're going to move forward, if that's okay.
Yeah, that would be great. We're dragging it out. I, you know, Karen, thank you for bringing that up because I know, there you are. Hi. I was like, where'd you go? Thank you for bringing up that piece because you, you and I had briefly talked about that before. And I just, for my own edification, and you may have to just come right back over here. Because I just want to make sure I understand because the, so because it's not just a bottomless pool of devices and because we are relying on the schools, we also can be fair and acknowledge, like, there have been some hiccups with just, like, where's the laptop that may have been turned in? So is that role that you just shared or reiterated, just, just for everyone's clarification, is that person going to serve in that purpose to help build that consistency? And so we really understand, do the schools have that system down so people aren't getting emails sometimes two years later saying, oh, PS, we are missing your kiddo's laptop? Or, or kind of who's going to own building that consistency with the school so the policy is really crisp and clear? I'll say first of all that we do have a job description that we have honed for the reinvigoration of the communications ambassadors program. And whereas they're more of the conduit between the school and my office with information flowing back and forth, I do hope that as this program becomes more mature, we can get down to some of what you're talking about with that individual. But really, it's about good news back and forth for my team. But Femi can answer the other part.
So in, in every school, we have worked with the school principal to define a school point of contact. In several cases, principals have identified more than one person. Those are typically our, our first point of contact as we work through all the device issues or any other process-related things at the school level. At this coming school year, we're making, so we're taking a proposal before the finance and budget team. This coming school year, we're making, we're taking a proposal before the finance and budget team to try to expand the team of field technicians that support the school so that we will have more dedicated support at the school level. But that's a July thing.
Thank you very much. And Karen, we do always love good news, so that's exciting.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Smith and our first set of presenters. And now we are ready for the innovation improvement and redesign update. Dr. Smith and Dr. Maxwell.
Okay. Long time no see. Good afternoon again, everyone. And so I have the opportunity to bring the second half essentially of the Performance Division annual update. And that is the update of our Innovation Improvement and Redesign Team. And I have the pleasure to introduce Dr. Kevin Maxwell, who's the Assistant Superintendent of Innovation, Improvement, and Redesign. The purpose of his update today will be to provide progress made on key IIR initiatives. As an example, ACEs review, Future of ACEs, Continuous Improvement, and Innovations. So with that, I will pass to Dr. Maxwell, who will speak to the work of his team.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Collins, Vice Chair Baldwin, members of the board, Dr. Herring and the community. Special welcome to Board Member Johnson. It is a, I'm excited to share what is happening in the Innovation, Improvement, and Redesign Department. When I speak about our department, we typically start with the APS Strategic Plan and the Goals and Guardrails, specifically Guardrail Number Four. Dr. Herring created our department in part to respond to the community and board values around Guardrail Four, which is innovation and accountability. One item that we want to point out is that the Strategic Plan and this Guardrail, Guardrail Four, have the words continual improvement, innovation, turnaround, and redesign embedded in it. The Innovation, Improvement, and Redesign Team has two departments, Continuous Improvement and Innovation and Redesign. Both departments work in concert as we know that every school and department in the district has strengths and areas identified for growth. The work of this team begins with the premise that we can extend and expand on what is working within and among schools, and we can explore and reimagine. We can explore and reimagine solutions and resources to fill those identified gaps. The work is centered on the APS Five and the Equity Commitments, driving towards a system of support that ensures every student in APS will flourish. Empowered by Guardrail Number Four, Continuous Improvement has collaborated and shared ownership with several district-wide projects that fuel our systemic transformation of APS. For instance, the conversion of school improvement planning, which is a summative function, into a continuous improvement planning, a more formative function, has been instrumental in our department's vision of being catalysts designing future-ready schools. Some projects for Continuous Improvement include Continuous Improvement Planning and Monitoring and Support to All APS Schools, World Class Professional Learning Partnerships, for instance, Deeper Learning and the ISTI Conference in New Orleans and the University of Virginia and Partners in Leadership. I just want to highlight that just not central office leadership, but more importantly, school-based leadership that we have provided for this professional development. Cross-divisional teaming and collaboration, high school credit recovery, as we had our highest percentage of high school graduation this past year. Aspiring leadership development. So Dr. Simon and Mr. Hardy work with Wardell Hunter in the Assistant Principal Professional Development and in the New Leaders Professional Development. But most significantly, it's our implementation with ACEs. ACEs has evolved and the Atlanta Public Schools game-changing data-driven protocol for Dr. Herring and all APS leaders. With more than 60 hours of data collection, over 1,200 qualitative and quantitative data points, a well-crafted mission statement that embodies the research and design of action reviews, we have gotten even closer to a true professional learning experience for all APS central and school-based leaders. We are eagerly approaching an even better ACEs experience in the upcoming weeks based on data and research. And so that will be in two weeks. And we've been working with CFO Lisa Bracken as schools will start getting their budgets. So we will be focusing not only on MAP, but focusing and sharing ideas with each other, with principals on what they're doing to improve and innovate in the schools. The tiered support model is now aligned. Whether we speak to our principals or speak to the board, we are using a three-tiered model. And it was developed collaboratively between the offices of schools, academics, and performance. So as you can see here, Tier Three is the comprehensive support and improvement schools. Tier Two, targeted support and improvement schools, Promise Schools, and previous CSI schools. And then Tier One, which includes our focus schools. The next slide shows the Tier One Focus Schools, the Tier Two Targeted Level Schools, and the Tier Three Comprehensive Level Schools for both our neighborhood schools and our charter and partner schools. As shown on the previous slides, within the tiered model of support, tiers two and three are designed to support turnaround schools. Support to turnaround schools include the following: leading Continuous Improvement Team, or SIT, School and District Meetings; state-provided onsite Continuous Improvement Teams; comprehensive needs assessment; monitoring for progress and effectiveness through the district plan of support; develop of the 45-day short-term action plans or STAPs that are derived from the Continuous Improvement Plan; monthly professional development; and state and district funding. Also, I wanted just to highlight the success of some of our schools to get off of the state identified list or move up the tiers. Usher Collier Elementary School, you can see, Long Middle School, Baraco Michelle Obama, and Percerson Elementary School exited the APS identified school list. Maze High School and Cascade Elementary School exited the Promise designation. Finch Elementary School and Young Middle School exited the CSI designation. And Tumor Elementary School moved from Promise designation to the TSI designation. One of our components of the broader turnaround strategy is the district's partnership with the University of Virginia Partnership in Leaders and Education. This specific partnership is aimed to accelerate improved outcomes for our most urgent cluster, the Douglas Cluster. It is important to note that this partnership is a learning lab experience. And so the next thing I want to read is the purpose statement that was actually written by the school-based leaders and the district leaders. "Our purpose for the Douglas Cluster transformation is to ensure students of the Douglas Cluster are better served by a system of equitable supports. As shareholders, we collectively commit to expose and engage scholars in enriching learning experiences that fully prepare them to pursue optimal post-secondary options and lead choice-filled lives. At this end of the multi-year partnership, we look to have transformed support structures in our system, refining our instructional infrastructure, and strengthening the collective leadership capacity of teachers and leaders through the equitable practices that ensure all students learn at high levels." As you can see behind me, I do not have my team here with me. And that is because they are in Oklahoma City right now. And so they are, they are just right now with this UVA PLE partnership. So it is our, it's my team, along with Dr. Florence, Dr. Rita Wolfolk, seven of our Douglas Cluster principals, including our leadership in the Ninth Grade Academy. Every principal got to, they were able to choose three other leaders for each school. And so they are working with Paul Bambrick-Santoyo, Driven by Data Workshop, which is focused on, for us, the APS Five data, that lever of data. So district leaders are looking, learning alongside the Douglas Cluster principals. And so I'm missing the first day and will be flying out of here this evening to be here, to be there the last two days. And last but not least, Innovation and Redesign. The Innovation and Redesign Team has set out this year to do the following: strengthen the culture of innovation throughout our district; support our colleagues in developing and operating with an innovator's mindset; design and implement high-quality professional learning pathways so that our colleagues learn how to apply to the design thinking process using an equity lens; serve as thought partners on district and school-based teams to improve processes and programs, and explore and reimagine solutions and resources to fill identified gaps. Our team has communicated George Karos's definition of innovation as creating something new or better. As you may recall, during the most recent summer leadership retreat, we gifted our district office and school-based leaders with a couple of books. One was Karos's The Innovator's Mindset, in which he defines the innovator's mindset as the belief that abilities, intelligence, and talent are developed, leading to the creation of better ideas. The team launched the Innovator's Mindset book study in August and concluded in December. The book study was in partnership with Kennesaw State University's statewide book study. Weekly updates were featured in the P3 and reminders and discussion questions were posted in workplace. The team also co-launched the Innovator's Mindset Firm, a principal's professional learning community that meets for 90 minutes during principal meetings. The session has grown to 20 participants and is designed by Dr. Henderson Rosser, Dr. Rachel, Dr. Simon, Principal Grant from Fickett, and myself. This PLC delivers top-notch peer-to-peer learning to our principals. Topics are aimed at cultivating an innovator's mindset through the book club discussions, design thinking sprints, ideation experiences with some of the school's greatest opportunities, and sharing and experiencing innovative practices happening at each other's schools. To date, the Innovation and Redesign Team has served as thought partners with at least one team in almost every division. For example, the team serves as thought partners with Human Resources on reimagining CLL, teaching, and school leadership. Operations: training and exploring ways to transform the way Transportation's leadership team communicates and collaborates within the department. Schools: we've worked with Virginia Highlands Elementary School, the Discovery Phase of the School of the Arts, expanding programming at Phoenix Academy, aiding in strengthening leadership development programs. Also, academics: an improving programming at the Atlanta Virtual Academy. The Innovation and Redesign Team's signature initiative this year is the implementation of the inaugural Design Thinking Cohort. It is a voluntary, when I say voluntary, it's a coalition of the eager and willing, and a year-long professional learning pathway to support shareholders in learning how to tackle complex challenges through an equity lens using design thinking. We help design teams connect with shareholders, understand and prioritize needs, explore innovative ways to solve problems, and test their solutions. The team has defined shareholders as people who have a vested interest in improving outcomes for all APS students. The team's goal was to serve 10 to 12 teams the first year of implementation of the Design Thinking Cohort. However, 15 teams were interested and 15 teams were served this year. The teams represent eight of nine clusters. There are 11 school-based teams, two Atlanta Virtual Academy teams, both direct and flex, one team of counselors across clusters, a college representative and a Georgia DOE representative, and one team of social workers from non-traditional schools, a college intern, and district office staff. Some of the feedback from the Design Thinking Cohort kickoff in November are as follows, and you can see some of the quotes. Highlights here reflect this team's ability to provide high-quality professional learning experiences for our colleagues. Currently, the team is working with individual cohort teams on the first phase of the process, empathizing with those with proximity to the problem and ensuring missing voices are being heard. Teams will gather again face-to-face in January and February for half-day training sessions, and they have been booked, and then conclude with a storytelling session and award ceremony in May. This last slide is just the Design Thinking Cohort roadmap, just to kind of show where we've been and where we will go. Thank you for letting me talk to you a little bit about the Innovation, Improvement, and Redesign Department. And now I can open it up for questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Maxwell. Any questions? I'll start on this end. Erica, Katie, and Tamara.
Thank you for your presentation. I just have one question, and it's probably just to clarify any thing that I might be off on. When I look at slide, what is it? I believe it's eight. No, it's not. It's nine. I'm sorry, nine. I just turned it around. The schools that made extremely great progress were just phenomenal. I know that there's been a lot of hard work, and I recognize that. But I just had a question around the different tiers. And I believe that brings me back to page seven and eight. But once they're removed off a certain tier, is that it? Or they go into another category? So, for example?
Yeah. I get that. No, I get that. Yeah. I just didn't put, we didn't put all the schools on that list. So if you didn't see them on the list, then they are in Tier One.
Okay.
Right? And so, and just maybe to add a little bit, so depending on the tier depends on what kind of support that we give them. Like, just say, for example, Tier Three, they might get four learning walks throughout the year. And Tier Two, they may get two learning walks, right? Just, and so depending on the tier is depending on the support we give.
And then, once they are off of that tier, that is it? They don't, it's not, because I see one, two, three?
Yeah.
So once they, like, when we just get one school, let's go Cascade. They're not Promise, Promise School, they're not on that tier anymore. So that's it, one, two, three. That's like?
Yeah, so like for Cascade, they would be Tier Two, they were on Tier Two, now they're in Tier One. But they'll be a focus school. Because if you go from like a Tier Three or Tier Two to Tier One, then we're going to focus on them just because obviously we don't want to get them back to a Tier Two or Tier Three school. That's a great question.
Thank you. That's what I was running, because I'm seeing them like they move off of this one, but where did that leave them now? But you just explain it, and that's what I wanted to kind of?
And I'm just listening to the associates, because I go, I meet with them every week. Even though they're Tier One, it's still, it's still not, we're still working with them, right? We still want to make sure we're looking at their data because we want them to continue on Tier One.
Okay. Thank you.
Katie?
Thank you, Dr. Maxwell and team. This is great and love seeing cross-collaboration and examples that you shared of things that are in the works and are producing results. And love the last slide that shows kind of a timeframe. Going back also to slide nine, looking forward to seeing, I guess, how we're pinpointing some things that have worked to take these schools, and I hate to say off-designated or categories, but just have created these awesome improvements. Looking forward to seeing, you know, what's worked at individual schools and how clearly you all are sharing this best practices with ACEs and other opportunities. But us even having more to share out with the community. So we have those real-life, on-the-ground examples of things that are working to really further push out to the community the successes, but so they really know what's happening for their children. So anything you want to share now?
Yeah, I mean, I'll share one example. I'll share one example. I mean, I always go back to Dr. Marzano, and it's the teacher in the classroom and the leader in the building, right? And so if you see it with a lot of those schools, if you look at Robin Christian and Lisa Hill, like, they are veteran principals, so I think it starts with that. I will say in regarding Finch and Young, who got off the CSI, who was off the CSI list, is that they focus on the professional learning community and common formative assessments. And I want to highlight them is because Ron Garland, so Young Middle School has used common formative assessments in their 10-day cycle as an essential strategy that we believe contributed to them getting off this list. And so I highlight, I'll highlight them because the instructional leaders, including Ron Garland, will present in Arizona at the Envision Learning Partners Assessment for Learning Convening and engage in an immersive experience to take their plan to the next level. And so I think other districts or other people are seeing what they're doing at Young. And not only do we want
A great example, and I would love that to be shared with the board, too, because that's a great one to just have and know more about, so thank you. And I know there are many others, but appreciate you highlighting that.
Okay.
Tamara?
Yes, thank you, and you asked one of my questions. So, how, and maybe this is just too detailed, but like, I'm trying to envision, like, how does that information get shared, like, with other principals, with the board members? You know, how do you elevate and celebrate, you know, when something is really working, so that people could talk about how they implemented it and how it might work in another spot?
So, a couple ways. I mean, one is, I think, through the Aces process, and it's a time to highlight, and many times, our Dr. Herring and the panel, they throw them, they understand, they throw them that question so that they can answer that. And it's something that not only the principals in the room can hear, but, I mean, all the principals can hear, right? The other, the other thing that we have in our, at our website is a clearinghouse. And so, when we heard what was happening at their school that was successful, then Dr. Simon and their team, they were getting the websites, they were figuring out, like, if it was something that they could pull, like, if it was at uncommon schools or a PLC process, then we were putting that in this clearinghouse of our website so that the principals can share. We also share, in the, when I say the P3, it's the Principal's Newsletter Weekly, and so we highlight that every Friday, and I just want to thank my team for that, because my name's on it, but a lot of my team puts that information in there, and that's, I guess I said a couple places, but that's three places where we share that information.
Thank you.
And I will say this, too, because, and again, the associates, I'm there weekly, the associates are speaking about this, right?
That's a great segue to introduce one of our associates. Mr. Tom Yashir actually was coming to the front to share that just then.
Good afternoon, Happy New Year to everyone on the board. So, to answer your question, some additional ways in which we engage, we do work with Kevin's team every Wednesday, and we do share best practices across all associate suites. Likewise, each associate's suite, you know, covers a region of schools, and so within those meetings, we share best practices across those clusters as well. So, we're looking at each associate superintendent, bringing principals together to share proven practices in each of the schools, and then we elevate that during our weekly collaborative planning meetings, so that each associate is sharing to each associate the best or promising practices happening within the cluster at each school as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Yashir. And then, we just wanted to share a little bit on some follow-up with communications in that same space to your responsible member, Jones.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello again, everybody. I never come up here, and now I'm come up here four times today. I just wanted to let you know that as probably what you could consider a smaller undergirding of what happens in Aces, the comms ambassadors will be having a monthly 90-minute meeting where they're also going to be encouraged to collaborate and share with one another. And I think even just by the nature of that program, it will be another way for best-practice schools to learn how to, for lack of a better term, brag on themselves a little bit better with training and support from my team, but also in hearing from one another what's happening at other schools, I think the information will seat itself that way as well.
Thank you. This is exciting information, and I did get the receipt of, you know, who's in the current cohort at the design thinking, and I just wanted to say I'm a huge fan of the design thinking process, and you use the term willing, so I'm assuming that these are people, schools who volunteered and said, hey, I've got something I need to work on.
That's exactly it. I want to say that it's not just volunteer, but it's their challenge. It's not, it's not another, it's not an initiative, it's not, I mean, Dr. Herring made it very clear that, you know, we're not going to have any new initiatives, right? Because we want to focus on the APS V and our equity commitment. And so, with this, it was a challenge that they had at the school, and so, they have a how-might-we question. So, for instance, there's one elementary that they're excited about the Aces process, they've done it with teachers, but they want to have student Aces. You know where that last question is? They're asking the student, what do you need from me? Right? What do you need from me? And so, it's their challenge, and so, we are working with them, not, we're not doing anything to them. It's with them and this process. And sometimes those questions have actually changed because they were asking the wrong question. Right? So, thank you.
Just a reminder and an appreciation, just a reminder of some of what Ms. Black is sharing relative to the expansion of the work that's happening with Communications, the school-based ambassadors. We did share that early on, just a reminder of the board to that. It is just that it does take time for us to be able to identify the right fit at each school to be able to do this. So, yes, four or five times, maybe that's it for today, Ms. Black, but a timely, certainly a timely reminder of why we know this is helpful, particularly at the school level from a communications standpoint, and also from a connections level. And then, I know I kind of jumped with a sound when you talked about student-level Aces, but really just wanted to push in on the willing and the space where it is our commitment to be able to not add on, but to simply support what our schools are saying they need to have that area of focus on, especially with design thinking. So, thank you, Dr. Maxwell.
Thank you. I have a question on Slide Eight. So, for the comprehensive-level Tier Three CSI schools, you did mention that everyone wasn't listed in Tier One. Is it safe to say that all the schools in the comprehensive-level Tier Three CSI are listed?
They are.
Okay. So, when I look at the charter and partner schools, my question is, how does your office support, what does that look like with them? What does that relationship look like?
Yeah, and so, Matt Underwood and our team, like, we meet, we have conversations, and right now, Dr. Simon is meeting with him, has met with him a couple of times. And so, what we need to do, and I hear your question, and we're just starting, but I think we need to do a better job, is to collaborate with one another, because they have some successes. We have successes, and that we should be able to communicate that, I think, in a different way. And so, we are, we are meeting, I've had some conversations with them, and while I'm pausing a little bit, like, we have a couple of things that we've talked about, but, you know, nothing that is, like, set in stone, and so, but we are continuing to just have conversations on how we can push in with one another.
And Matt's behind you.
Okay, and again, just not, not just the sharing of best practices, but also in terms of, you talked about, on that level, there's a certain level of support. So, help us understand how that is the same or different when we're talking about charter and partner schools.
Sure, and there was a Matt behind a Matt, so I'll introduce Matt Underwood, our Executive Director of Charter and Partner Schools.
Thank you. It's like a nesting doll here. Good afternoon, everyone. Matt Underwood, I'm the Executive Director of the Office of Charter and Partner Schools. So, in addition to what was shared a moment ago, in terms of support and monitoring, so our team in Office of Charter and Partner Schools works more so with the Georgia Department of Education, who takes the primary lead on the monitoring and oversight for schools that are on the CSI list. So, a member of our team is a part of all of the school review meetings, works closely with Jeffrey Castle, who's the DOE contact for APS, in monitoring and oversight for schools that are on the CSI and then on the TSI list as well, in addition to the things that Dr. Maxwell was mentioning, just in terms of sharing of best practices, too.
So, it sounds like they're, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but they're not necessarily on their own, but that is their lane, that is their lane to do that. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
That's right. So, yes, so, yeah, so they, being a charter and partner school, have autonomy in a number of different areas, and so, one of the things that we want to do is make sure that we're involved in the oversight without prescribing solutions, because that's something that they are focused on themselves as a charter or partner organization.
Thank you.
And just to add on, I want to name that, I'll give you an example, as Matt and I have spoken about with the partner schools, that they may be involved in Aces in the future, right? So, those are the kind of conversations that we're having, that we are thinking about.
Yeah, and I definitely think that matters, particularly when we start talking about, you know, innovation, performance, but also these conversations, because oftentimes, what we're seeing with just the recent release of school data, some of those schools that are on those performance lists with the state are some of our charter and partner schools, and so, I think it is opening up a dialogue of not only what autonomy and flexibility is, but at this juncture, what collaboration truly looks like to support that, because then what tends to happen is this dialogue of who's responsible, and it's like, and it's not about who's responsible, it's about how can we approve the learning environment for all children, whether it is a traditional charter or a partner school. So, I appreciate that. I did have one question about Slide Eight as well, and it was part of the dialogue that you were speaking with about Aces, and it was a mention of, in regards to budgets also being aligned to that. Being that Aces is this design review and this opportunity for school leaders to, you know, to dive into what's working, what's not working, and innovate in that space, being that we're upcoming, we're coming up on a budget cycle, and I don't want to get too deep into it, because I also don't want to overlap with finance, but are we going to have those conversations of removing some of the barriers so schools can fully invest in these innovative ideas or thoughts that are coming from their specific schools, number one? And then, number two, the question would be the equitable part of that, where you may not have a school or a school community that will volunteer for a design thinking, you know, design thinking cohort, but that could actually benefit, like, that school or that community or whatnot. So, just, so, speak to that just a little bit. I don't want to go, I know you want to tread lightly, because it's so much finance-driven, but just thinking about that ideation around budgets being around this Aces piece as well.
Well, and I just, I turned to see Lisa Bracken, because, only because we're having the budget session coming up on January 24th, and she's innovative in the way that she's thinking, and she's like, I want you to be a part of that budget meeting, so I want your team. So, Dr. Simon from Innovation and Redesign, and Derek Hardy from Continuous Improvement, that we're going to have a session to start thinking through about what are their challenges, what are the funds that they have, and it might not be an innovation, because somebody else has already done it, right? I always think, like, is innovation is something that you've thought of, but it could just be an improvement that maybe somebody from another school and another cluster has done. And so, we are going to be, basically, Ms. Bracken has put us at the table, so to speak, in those budget conversations to have those type of conversations.
And I think, and then bringing it back to the Aces conversation, so this mid-year cycle of the Aces as well, we're very thoughtful about where it falls, and we placed it on the calendar so that it would come before budgets were finalized, so we're prioritizing a lot of the budget conversation there, seeing that alignment, and it does dovetail with what the finance team is leading as well, but we want to align those conversations so that there is the opportunity to recognize challenge. And also, to the second question about rising up and finding some of those opportunities for design challenge, that comes out of the Aces conversations. So, a community that might not, as we said, as readily volunteer, we're hearing it through those conversations. It's just another avenue to be able to peel back the onion and say, hey, have we thought about here? So, that, just add those two things, Board Chair Collins.
Thank you. And it kind of goes to my second, the second question, the last question, which is Slide Nine. There was part of the slide that talked about, that mentions turnaround allocations, and it kind of, I think it kind of goes to Erica's question as well, as we're seeing schools that are in these varying tiers. One of the data, one of the points says data-driven decisions to update allocations in that space, but how also, my question is, thinking about that, how do we overlap that with sustainability as well? So, I think that kind of goes to Erica's question, where as schools move off of certain tiers, there, you know, there's this fear, and I know we've expressed it every year of ensuring that there's, there remains some level of investment, to your point, to keep that, to sustain that work, or what, to help sustain what has worked, and not just, like, pull the rug completely from underneath. So, just wanted to ask a little bit about, like, what does that entail when you say the turn, you know, turnaround allocations and changing those things?
Yeah, no, that's a great question, and that's one thing that CFO Bracken brought up and spoken to Dr. Smith, and so, we are not, you know, quote, pulling the rug out because we are tiering that also. So, just because that they're moving up in the tier, they are not going from, you know, a certain amount of funding to zero. Okay? And so, yeah, we want to make sure that that is the case. The other thing that we have done, too, is, and I think that goes to this, the question that you had in the slide, is that we, you know, took a page out of the finance book as far as, before this year, all of our schools, like, if you're on a CSI, if you're a CSI school, got the same amount of funds. But that could be a school that has 200 students and a school that has 1,200 students. And so, part of the funding mechanism is we took the page out of the book of the Student Success Formula, and so, we made sure that, at least in part, that we would multiply the number of students. So, you're going to see that a school that has more students will have more funding.
You said a school that has more students will have more funding?
If they're in, like, so, for instance, if they are at the Tier Three level, that they will have different funding depending on the number of students.
As a factor, but not the overall crux of the budget?
Just for turnaround funds.
Okay.
Just for turnaround funds.
All right. I mean, I'm just asking, just for us also to set the stage for the budget, we get ready in the budget season, so as we're thinking about, like, student-based funding, equity, you know, not moving to the traditional way of funding schools per pupil, but per, you know, like, by need, and thinking about that, just wanted to put that out there, because I think this work and the data that comes from this and your team is going to overlap a lot of those. I mean, I'm quite sure a lot of budgets and decisions that will be, will be made in this upcoming...
And what I will say is, it's a yes and, it's a per pupil and per need.
Right. And that was my question.
Yep.
Thank you. Well, that's all I have gotten here. Any other questions from my colleagues?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Maxwell and Dr. Smith and team, both from the Pit Department. Ms. Bracken, we are ready for your monthly financial update and budget development update.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Collins, members of the board, Dr. Herring, and congratulations to our new board member. Today, I'll present two topics related to finance. I'll wait just a moment for that presentation to come up. There we go. First, I'll provide to you the financials for FY 2023 for all activities occurring in the Consolidated General Fund for the months of July through November. I'll then provide to you a brief overview and update to you on the current progress of the FY '24 budget development cycle. We actually do not have budget adjustments today. With the next four slides, we will... We didn't have time to get them in, so no budget adjustments today. With the next four slides, we will cover the FY '23 financials for the first five months of the fiscal year. So far, we have collected about 75.49% of the total resources budgeted, with local at 88.68%, state at 27.25%, and other, which includes the Fund 150 Title I Transfer Inn at 39.08%. This month, we see reflected in the financials what I alluded to last month, which is the overall uptick in the local revenue collections. We're currently tracking ahead of pace at 88.68% collected, as compared to 81.14% this time last year. This information gave us the confidence to go forward with the one-time appreciation stipends in December, and seems to suggest to us again this year that we may not need to leverage the fund balance to the degree that we included in the initial budget projections. On Slide Five, we see the budget to actual expenditures for the Consolidated General Fund so far for FY '23. Spending in all functions is appropriate for this point in the fiscal year at 35.88%. Slide Six represents the current spending trend for FY '23 against '22. While there are some fluctuations function by function, the overall spend is on... While there are some fluctuations function by function, the overall spend is on pace with and slightly lagging the previous year's spend. We will continue to monitor spend and leverage opportunities through the budget transfer process to address any unforeseen needs within the current allocations. Detailed financials can be found in Agenda Item 9.4. Agenda Item 9.5 includes the detailed information report for special revenue adjustments, less than $1 million that have occurred in December. My final section will provide an update to the FY 24 Budget Planning and Development Process. We are currently on track to release the department budget development templates through our Alaveo system tomorrow. And we'll kick the budget development season off with our first training sessions. School templates are scheduled to release on January 24th or a bit earlier if at all possible. And the full day budget development training that Mr. Maxwell just referenced is scheduled for January 24th. We will be providing ongoing training and support sessions for both principals and department center managers throughout the month of February, and we'll be locking budgets in early March. As it currently stands, our next Budget Commission meeting is scheduled for January 19th, which I do believe conflicts with our State of the District, so we're working to reschedule that meeting if at all possible. And our final meeting with the SSF Task Force is later this week, I believe on Wednesday. At that session, we will recap all that we have heard over the last five months from that group, summarize those recommendations that we feel confident moving forward with in the current fiscal year and those that are, we are proposing to research and analyze over the upcoming year to better understand their potential equity impacts before we move forward with those. That concludes my presentation. I'll take any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you for that. Very well done. Thank you for the outline of what's coming up in the budget process. And at what point in there do the schools get the information about the SSF formula?
So that is the January 24th full-day retreat. So we spend the morning kind of walking through the formula, all the things that change within what we call the pie of the pie. So all the things that are changing within that pie going into the upcoming fiscal year. That's also when they have an opportunity to, opportunity to have those breakout sessions. They can sit with somebody in budget, in federal programs, in the Innovation Office, and get guidance and support on any initiatives that they might want to target in the upcoming year. We can also deep dive any particular changes that might be impacting their specific budget allocations.
So it's finalized on the 24th?
It is finalized on the 24th. We are, we, we ran some budget projections before the break. I actually spent all weekend building school budgets just to make sure that we can balance those schools, that the formula is deriving what we anticipated. We do need to go back and make a couple of tweaks based on what we saw this weekend, but we're getting really close to wrapping those up. So I do hope that schools, we've heard from principals in the past, that they prefer to receive those budget allocations a day or two before the training so they have time to process before coming in. And so that is our goal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bracken, for that presentation. It is now time for our discussion for our Student Outcomes Focused Governance Engagement. We're ready to begin the sixth monthly Student Outcomes Focused Governance Progress Monitoring Report on our interim 4.2 goal within Goal Four. Interim Goal 4.2 allows us to monitor progress towards students passing two Advanced Placement or AP exams, passing two International Baccalaureate IB exams, or earning one dual credit, dual enrollment credit. Board Chairwoman, I will pass, pass the floor to you as we begin.
Great. Thank you so much. And so before we dive in, I would like to take some time, again, to review the norms and expectations for our monitoring session. As Dr. Herring takes us through the monitor report, she will discuss, again, the district's progress towards meeting interim Goal 4.2A, which is the percentage of ninth grader, ninth grade students enrolled in Advanced Placement classes, in which we set that goal will increase from 7.8% as of May 2022 to 21.8% in May of 2024. And also interim Goal 4.2B, which is the percentage of 10th graders who pass at least one AP exam. That is the actual score of three or higher, and that will increase from 50.5% as of May 2022 to 54.5 in, in May of 2024, as well as interim Goal 4.2C, which is the percentage of 11th grade, 11th graders who pass at least one Advanced Placement exam, or pass at least one IB exam, or has earned at least one dual enrollment credit. And that will increase, we set the goal for that increasing from 59.6 as of May 2022 to 63.6 in May of 2024. And so just wanting to set the stage again for our norms and expectations of creating and engaging dialogue with the superintendent administration, thinking about what factors lead to the current levels of achievement that we're seeing. Also asking questions as did the district make progress towards, or is the district making progress towards the 2024 goal that we've set and why or why not? What are some of the strategy and resources that worked well or didn't work well? Are there any changes or adjustments that need to be made? And also what kind of, what support looks like? Do, will the administration need for the board to be successful? And so asking for you to hold your questions until after Dr. Herring has walked through the entire report. And also just remember, your questions should not be evaluative. We're telling the superintendent what to do or suggesting actions for the administration. And, and also being mindful of not referencing extraneous data that is not included in this report. So we just stay the course or really diving into understanding the, the goals that we set and how we are progressing, progressing towards them. And just understand that we do stray away from some of those expectations and norms. Don't charge it to my, my heart if I have to redirect us in any manner or ask you to rephrase your, rephrase your question. It comes from a true place of love and understanding. And so with that being said, Dr. And with that being said, Dr. Herring, please walk us through today's monitor report.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, and thank you. I'm going to start by providing some background and context, beyond which or added to what Board Chairwoman has shared. Interim Goal 4.2A identifies the percentage of ninth grade students enrolled in Advanced Placement classes. Interim Goal 4.2B identifies the percentage of 10th grade students who pass at least one Advanced Placement exam. For example, they score three or higher. Interim Goal 4.2C identifies the percentage of 11th grade students who pass at least one Advanced Placement exam, for example, score of three or higher, or pass at least one international baccalaureate exam, a score of four or higher, or earned at least one dual enrollment credit, and that's a grade of 70 plus. As a reminder, our interim goals are designed to help us simply monitor progress towards our actual board goals. When we look at this data, we need to keep in mind that interim Goal 4.2 is only reporting on three of the eight ways that students can demonstrate college and career readiness. And as you may recall, in December, we discussed ACT, SAT, and Career Pathways, which are three additional ways of demonstrating college and career readiness. We need to remember that these data points are only a snapshot in time and based upon available data. And now I would like to call your attention to Figure one. This figure shows Board Goal Four, the percentage of high school students who score at the college and career readiness level on career pathway assessments, IB, AP, dual enrollment, ACT or SAT, work-based learning, or entering TCSG or USG, the Technical College and System of Georgia or the University System of Georgia, without needing remediation, will increase from 51.5% in October of 2019 to 59.3% by October 2025. Now I would like to call your attention to Figure two. This figure illustrates the percent of ninth grade students enrolled in Advanced Placement courses. The blue line included in the figure shows our target line and the orange dot shows our baseline data from 2021, 22, from the 2021, 2022 school year. The big letter N shows us the number of students who enrolled in at least one AP course. This is the number behind the percentage. Looking at the orange dot, we can see that 17.8% of our ninth grade students enrolled in at least one Advanced Placement course. This percentage is based on the total number of first-time ninth grade students in the district. And that number, by the way, is 3,507 students. And the data is from spring of school year 2022 and will serve as our baseline. So now we're going to look at Figure three. This figure shows the percentage of 10th grade students who scored a three or higher on at least one Advanced Placement exam. As a, as a reminder, the blue represents our target line and the orange dot, our actual baseline data from the 21, 22 school year. Our interim goals are designed to help us monitor progress towards our actual board goals. And our current data shows 50.5% of our 10th grade students scored a three or higher on at least one Advanced Placement exam. The denominator for this calculation is based on the total number of 10th grade students that took at least one AP exam. It's about 818 students. And this data is from spring of school year 2022 and will serve as our baseline. And now we will look at Figure four. And this figure shows the percentage of 11th grade students who scored a three or higher on at least one Advanced Placement exam, or four or higher on at least one IB exam, or earned one dual enrollment credit. As a reminder, the blue represents our target line and the orange dot, our actual baseline data from the 21, 22 school year. Our current data shows that 59.6 of our 11th grade students scored a three or higher on at least one AP exam, or four or higher on at least one IB exam, or earned one dual credit. The denominator for this calculation is based on the total number of 11th grade students that took an AP or IB exam, or were enrolled in dual enrollment course. This data is from spring of school year 2022 and will serve as our baseline. I'd like to just speak to our overall progress. Looking at our overall progress, I would like to call our attention to the color-coded legend, which shows the status levels. Red, meaning below target, yellow, developing, neo-green, on track, and then forest green, exceeding target. We are currently on track for Board Goal Four. We are on track. We are on track for interim Goal 4.2, given the data that is currently available. And we will reevaluate our, our status as the data for the current school year becomes available later this spring. The data in the next three tables shows us that the district needs to continue its focus on strengthening the academic skills of our elementary and middle school students to ensure students are prepared for advanced coursework in high school. We're going to take a look at Table one, which shows the percent of ninth grade students enrolled in at least one AP course by subgroup. Overall, 17.8% of ninth grade students enrolled in at least one AP course during the 21, 22 school year. Overall, the 17.8% of our ninth grade students enrolled in at least one AP course during the school year. And when looking at the data by sub-group, we do see disparities in AP enrollment. Approximately 83% of first-time ninth grade students enrolled in AP courses selected AP Human Geography. Other courses selected by students included AP Biology, AP Calculus, AP Computer Science, AP Physics, AP Psychology, AP Statistics, APS US History, APS, AP World History, and APS US Government and Politics. Of those participating in Advanced Placement exams, 48.08% of first-time ninth grade students passed at least one AP exam. The data in this figure is from spring of school year 2022. We see higher levels of enrollment with the Asian, white, multiracial, and gifted student groups. There are gaps amongst our Black and Hispanic groups. And looking at root causes, the majority of APS, of AP, the majority of AP course offerings have historically been concentrated in schools where there are higher populations of white students. School staffing can limit the number of AP, of AP course options available due to other school-based scheduling priorities and also certification of teachers. In working to address these challenges, we have not seen any evidence that a lack of training has been a barrier to student enrollment. However, the district is working to ensure that all teachers of Advanced Placement have received appropriate training. And there, these are some strategies that we are implementing to address these gaps. So the Department of Innovation is working with the Division of Academics to explore ways to offer AP courses virtually to students and/or remotely with multiple schools sharing the same instructor. So that is a work in progress and important to note is a question that has indeed been asked. The district is starting this work in middle school by offering the PSAT in eighth grade. We are using the AP potential reports that are reports from the College Board that predict student success in AP courses based on their PSAT scores. And these reports allow high schools to use data to offer courses that greater populations of their students could be successful in. We're also working to increase students' access to advanced coursework while in middle school. So now we're going to look at Table two, which shows the percent of 10th grade students passing at least one AP exam by subgroup. Students must receive an Advanced Placement score of three or higher to be considered passing. Looking at 10th grade, we still see the gaps between our white student groups and our Black and Hispanic groups. We see all student group at 50.5%, Black at 21%, Hispanic at 53.5%, and multiracial at 79.3%. Remember, please, that this is our baseline data and we will be able to make comparisons after the spring testing administration. Table three shows the percentage of, the percent, I'm sorry, the percent of 11th grade students who passed at least one AP exam, at least one IB exam, or earned one dual enrollment credit by subgroup. The denominators for AP and IB are based on the number of students that took the AP and IB exams. And the denominator for dual enrollment is based on the number of students enrolled in a dual enrollment course. Some key findings include all student group exceeding 50% on AP, IB, and dual enrollment measures. 82.7% of our 11th grade Black students are earning at least one dual enrollment credit. The data shows that more Black students enroll in dual enrollment while more white students enroll in AP and IB courses. It is important to note that the number of AP and IP, AB, that the number of AP and IB offerings vary by high school. In alignment with our equity commitments, we are currently working with high schools to increase access to advanced courses. And while dual enrollment is available to students across all campuses, half of our dual enrollment students are enrolled in Carver Early College and Booker T. Washington High School, which both offer early college programs. High School, which both offer early college programs. In addition, dual enrollment opportunities are not dependent on home school staffing or course offerings. I would like to talk a little bit about some of our next steps. The data is showing us that we are moving in the right direction with our strategies and initiatives. It is important to remember, again, I've said it earlier, that this data is only a snapshot and that we still need your support to continue to work effectively, implement, to implement our strategies and our action steps throughout the year if we want to meet our overall board goals. We do not currently offer any pre-AP courses in our middle schools. That's important to note. We don't currently offer any pre-AP courses in our middle school, but the academics team does plan to meet with the College Board this winter to discuss this strategy. We have several initiatives in place to prepare middle schools for AP and IB. We will continue to implement and improve upon the following. An AP/IB boot camp offered through Power Up during the summer. The boot camp guides students through innovative lessons and learning. Through lessons and, through innovative lessons and learning activities to develop skills needed to successfully complete AP, IB, and college readiness activities. And the PSAT in the eighth and ninth grade. Results from this assessment are interpreted with students to identify strengths in high school AP courses for which they have demonstrated potential to succeed. And then, the Middle Years Program, sixth through tenth grade, is designed to prepare students for dual, for CP enrollment. North Atlanta and Sutton, Tharrell and Bunch, and Jackson and King are part of the Middle Years Program, authorized and in full implementation. Mays and Young are in the candidacy phase and are implementing many elements but are not yet fully authorized. And so, I will stop at this time, Madam Chair, and entertain any questions for engagement and discussion regarding today's discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Herring, for your report out.
Yes, ma'am.
I know this high-level overview with data by subgroups, but I do have a question, and I think it's because it helped me identify where opportunities are for our students. When we look at ninth, tenth, eleventh grade, you have established the baseline data, but what I would like, well, can I say what I would like? I don't know. I don't want to get deemed.
Let's see.
But what opportunity presented itself for me to see is, what does it look like school by school? When I say school by school, it's like, we have the data with the subgroups, but when you break it down by the schools, you can see where the opportunities are for additional support or whatever, what is it called? Not training, but, call it not training, but for the, for the students, but prep classes.
Preparation.
And then, the other reason why I ask, because it helps me when I explain to communities when they're asking about what are their schools doing in their area. We could, I could be able to explain to them, this is what we have established for them, this is what we're providing for, this is the support, and this is the data for that school versus the over, overall data for the entire district. Then also, I did have one question about students with disabilities. Could you kind of explain why there's no data for those students?
As a part of the?
A part of, I think I've seen it on.
So, so looking at table two, where we, students with disabilities, and then, at that point, there's the asterisks, and I think that's tied to the, the reason is N equals less than ten, am I right? So when there are, that, when the number is less than ten, yes, ma'am, that's why.
But they do have the opportunity.
Yes, ma'am, yes. Let's go back to the original question, which is really tied to some, so you were not asking, but you are inquiring about the opportunity to see data and a breakout of that data, school by school.
School by school, yes.
And then, subgroup data within that school.
Correct.
Number one, the offering of, so what are those course offerings? And then, what does it look like in terms of who's enrolling in those courses? So just a twofold dynamic. As we prepare for SOFTG discussion, we do tailor very specifically what data we bring into this discussion. That doesn't mean we can't make available as an addendum or an addition, yes, ma'am, that level of data. So we will follow up with that. We do try to honor the guidelines of what to bring as it relates to data points for this discussion, because that opens up a much larger discussion beyond the time that we have allotted, but I understand the desire or the appetite for that, and so we will make that available. We'll follow up with making, securing that data and getting it to the board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Before I go to Katie, yeah, just, yeah, Doc, just to, I don't know if it's something that we need to revisit in a retreat or thinking more detail, but this is the, the third monitoring report where we've asked for more of that detailed, you know, like that detailed data, just so, you know, just so we can have. So I will say move, yeah, moving forward, if we can have, you know, have that information available, we could work, we can, we can work, work on it, but I will think, I do think it is, because we all have questions about diving in, understanding, understanding it. So just to Erica's point on a really.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that. Tag team a little bit with me on this, Dr. Smith, and anyone, actually, who's done some of the SOFTG training. Because there is, there are, there are data that's out there that we can absolutely provide. Again, the streamlining of that, we're just wanting to follow then the guidelines and bringing it forward for the sake of discussion, but never to take it away from the board for review. And so, just wanting to be able to navigate the conversation that says, how do we balance us trying to follow the protocol of data information for the sake of SOFTG discussion while also honoring the appetite for the board to want to see those data that would inform even more school by school? So we will follow up in that space. We don't tend to bring that into the discussion. Where does, where is that, where does that interface? Because you are correct, each time we do bring it, there is the follow-up appetite. Well, what does this look like broken out by schools? So just a little tag team.
Yes, ma'am, I'll just, I'll just double down on, on that response. Typically, with our monitoring reports, we're trying, we're staying within the guidelines that the Council of Great, Council of Great City Schools shares in their student outcome focused government's framework, which typically tends to live at the district level and at the strategy level. That being said, I think those, those deeper conversations, to your point, Board Chair Collins, there could be an opportunity, if there's a very specific retreat-style opportunity to dig deeper, engage. But in terms of the design of the report, we've been trying to build those in alignment with, with the framework, which tends to keep the, keep the, the data points at, at the district level. That being said, to honor, to Dr. Herring's point, how we might be able to provide that, that deeper dive. It also would create a, a space that would go well beyond our, our time bounds, certainly, but we can, we can, our, our team is certainly available to think through how we might be able to, you know, provide a deeper dive at, at certain junctures, certainly.
And let me just add, just doing a little thought partnership on this one, Board Chair, woman, and even if part of what we can do is make that data available for digestion before we are here with the engagement, but knowing that when we have this level of discussion, we want to balance, we're trying to follow the framework, we'll find that spot. And then, I'm also wanting to just name out loud, part of what I understand happens through this process is we also make it ours, right? And so, so just, just several factors. Absolutely nothing we want to withhold. We will, we will, we will, we'll figure that piece out.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I think, yeah, I think it's, I think it's, we probably want to just, and I'm, and I don't think it's necessarily detailed school level, but even if it's something per, like, per cluster, so when you look at like the data of the subgroups, and when you see, you know, like, looking at the data of subgroups, and so, so for example, you have this nine point four percent of Black, you know, of Black students that are enrolling into a AP course in ninth grade, and if we see those pockets of, to Erica's point, opportunities that are in other clusters that are lacking in others, I think that does, in fact, set the stage for the monitoring report to kind of dive through, like, what's working, what's not working, how, you know, what, how can the board support certain things? And so, I think, and I don't think it need to be a double down into like the school level piece, but I definitely think having a more overarching view of what's happening district, while I think part of that cluster level data would be great as well. Katie, then, Tamara, then Cynthia, and then Aretha.
Thank you for that, and I think we're all craving to go deeper, which is great. And looking at these numbers, I'm going to skip to, is it slide six, around the eleventh grade data with the number of students who passed at least one AP exam, at least one IB exam, or earned one dual enrollment credit by subgroup. And looking at these numbers, I mean, looking at, for IB in particular, kind of tagging on maybe to some of what you were asking about, Erica. With white students, it's ninety-two point six percent, and Black students, we don't even have ten in this sample. And same for Hispanic, multiracial, Asian, economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities, and former English learners. Knowing this data before us, what are we doing specifically around strategy and targeting this need, which we know, and I'm glad we're looking at these numbers, because clearly we don't know how to best support unless we know what's really going on? And twofold, you know, going deeper into the status of our current IB programs throughout the system. Dr. Herring, I'm glad you already mentioned that some of our programs are still in the phase of, not development, but they're not all the way certified. And how do we support as a board, certainly, that process, but just knowing exactly what is going on to make sure that clearly it's a student choice, but students really do know exactly what is available to them, the benefit for them, and that we have robust IB programs throughout our system, of course, AP and dual enrollment, not to take away from either one of those, but clearly IB stuck out to all of us.
Yes, I just want to clarify this table just a bit, because IB, when we're saying the IB program, this table is specifically reporting on eleventh grade students, which you don't enter the IB program until the eleventh grade. So this column is only reporting on eleventh grade students that were enrolled in one course, because most of the courses you test in the twelfth grade after you've been in it for two years. So it's very misleading to say that this column is indicative of the IB enrollment or even the IB students in totality. It's only available at North Atlanta and Jackson, and it's more available, or more students enrolled at North Atlanta than Jackson. So it's a very small number of students shown here in this table. The DP program is available at Tharrell, but the IB Business Management Course specifically wasn't offered for this data point. So it's only showing sixty-eight students that took this one exam. Every other exam, they take in the twelfth grade after they've been in the course for two years.
That's extremely helpful. I think goes back to like getting more clarification about some of this data, but what is it indicative of? And also, again, the offerings, which we know we can't yet offer the exact same thing at the exact same level everywhere, and that's okay too. But again, I appreciate you clarifying, because I did note, I hope people got this, that it's passing, not enrolled, but passing one IB, and then you're clarifying further, it's a particular program.
It's just one course.
One course. And I get that the IB is eleventh, you enter eleventh, and then twelve. But still seeing that this data that we have IB at schools that are predominantly Black, like, understanding a little deeper what our strategy is, and again, not taking away from dual enrollment or AP, and do want to celebrate the gains we're seeing with more students from ninth to tenth enrolling in AP, and I love, Dr. Herring, that you referenced the eighth grade exposure.
Yes.
And Power Up, can't wait to hear more about those opportunities. But just seeing even how, you know, kids even think, oh, that's a lot more work, like, I don't really want to do that. So how are we even, you know, strategies around that? I know that's a lot, but certainly recognizing that there are gains, but my kids are at Jackson High School, and I hear about concerns around, do kids, all students know all the opportunities that are available, and are they, again, prepared for that rigor should they choose it?
Sure.
And so, anything y'all want to share about our strategies? I will stop talking. I would love to hear them.
Thank you, Board Member Howard. Perfect question. So, of course, we're going to start with our counselors, and so counselors play a pivotal role in making sure that students understand each year what is available to them at their school. And so, as you know, counselors meet with students throughout the year, and that is what we are charging our counselors with even more, because we know that that is an area of growth for counselors, working on enrollment in AP and all of the courses around, surrounding our board goals. And so, that's just about getting the word out about what are we working on as a district and people understanding how we support kids so that kids understand what's available to them at every single school. Of course, we're starting with the counselors is one big piece. Also, again, looking at the advanced placement proposal type of data that Dr. Herring kind of spoke to in her talking points at the eighth grade level, so let's just say Long Middle School, and then we'll talk about South Atlanta High School. And so, using that data from the pre-SAT information and from the pre-AP, if the PSAT data, it allows us to be able to say, from Long to South Atlanta, here's how the kids at Long fared on the pre-SAT. Here are some courses, advanced courses, that our students can take advantage of. They would be successful at your high school in these courses. So it allows the principal at South Atlanta to really talk to the principal at Long to say, hey, next year, I want to offer X, Y, and Z, and here's the data from Long from the kids who took the PSAT to say, here's where we think they would, will fare well, and we can offer it, and kids know before they get there, because the counselor's also using that data and talking to students about it in a one-on-one setting.
And I want to tag team, I'm going to pull it over here for just a moment, to bring this back, and I always appreciate the team. I want to really hone in, excuse me, on what our Chief Academic Officer, Ms. Brown, was sharing relative to the middle school, to the counselor, and I'm going to also get specific around grade opportunities, grade, G-R-A-D-E, opportunities where it really can be a powerful pathway. That is middle grades. So much of what happens at the middle grades level specifically tied to preparing students not only for rigor but for advanced placement and for the identification of what their high school four-year plan is going to look like, is heavily co-dependent on what happens during the middle grades. By the time they're ninth and tenth grade, they're already halfway through, already halfway through the high school experience, although I'm not minimizing that that can occur. So the pre-AP, PSAT, what happens in the eighth grade or seventh and eighth grade with our students, the understanding of their interest, et cetera, that's, I don't want to minimize the power, the role of not only the middle grades counselor, but also those same conversations with parents and with students, and that clear understanding before they leave eighth grade of what AP is, dual enrollment means, and also IB, if that is their, their choice. And then, of course, the continuation of that occurs each year with, with the secondary counselor, but that, one of the highly appropriate and impactful roles does happen at that grade level. And then, I'm just emphasizing it a bit more, and it's just this former school counselor voice and recalling the pre-AP and the, pre-AP course offerings that can happen at the middle grades level. That's a wonderful spring board, I meant to that, and then to also not minimize PSAT. Some of the other best practices that College Board has spoken to over the years around working to bring in more students of color into AP courses is to work very hard not to gatekeep. So that's mindset, that's at the instructional level, whether that's the teacher, the counselor, or the principal. And the other piece is if there are courses where there are a small number of students of color, that there's not just a student of color, and I, one student in a, in a class, but expanding that opportunity so that, so as to diversify the class as much as possible to help at least get that first experience in the course if there's some angst or reservation. So I just want to name that. Those are practices that we just have to have intentionality around, as well as very candid conversations with students. And then, I just want to also name that, that, and I've talked about this in some of our one-to-ones, we see that our data shows us right now that there's a, what appears to be the higher interest with African-American students in dual enrollment. That's not a negative, right? That intentionality around dual enrollment can just as easily be strategic around the opportunity to knock out those courses before they hit college and so as to minimize cost for college as well as accelerate their, their momentum towards getting the degree. So if indeed, as they look at their menu of options, that preference is dual enrollment, then go for it. But what I also hear from the board is we want to make certain that it's a preference and not a inability to have, have a prerogative. But I wanted to put that into the conversation as well. But I wanted to put that into the conversation as well.
And thank you so much for that because that is extremely helpful. And talking about how we're focusing in on best practices, I look forward to tracking that data, like looking at middle schools that are having success and exposing their students, even having more enroll in dual enrollment in AP and IB.
Yes.
And then my closing on this right now is, has this data been shared with the Student Advisory Council? Because I would love to get their feedback on that. And we talked about it because I think it'd be cool to hear what they think, because I hear a lot from them in meetings about why they think students are picking different pathways.
Absolutely. And that's the elevation, Board Member Howard, of student voice. So we've tagged team with you in that. I'm set this semester to also circle back to the Student Advisory Council, so we'll get that in front of them for discussion. Yes, ma'am.
Tamara?
Thank you. And it's really good to see, like, get the landscape for the baseline for this. I'm hearing from some people that maybe they share a little bit of confusion I have on the denominator factors on some of these. Because this is, we've picked a tricky data point to monitor, right? Because everything else we've done with the reading and math, and those are things that all students take, they all take the exams, you know, and so it's, so I struggle a little bit, like, so if we go through the tables, table one, two, and three. So table one is the percentage of all the students who are enrolled in an AP course. So they're taking a course. I'm less sure about table two, where it says the 10th grade students passing AP exam. In one case with the IB, you said it was of the ones who took it, who took the exam. And we know there are kids who take, who enroll in the courses, but they don't, they elect not to take the exam. They don't have to, right? And so it's almost like, I'd love to see either insets or another column of all these subgroups, like the percentage of the subgroups who took the course, then the percentage of those who took the exam. And then, so I'm confused as to whether or not the ones who passed are only the ones who took it, or is it the pass rate amongst the kids who enrolled in the class? Because if it is enrolled in the class, a lot of kids choose not to take the exam because they might be applying, well, lots of sorts of reasons. But some of them might be applying to schools who aren't going to give them credit anyway, so they are not going to waste their time. So I am confused about what the denominator is on some of these.
So, Dr. It's not on. So first of all, thank you for the clarification and the call-out. That's fair, and perhaps even something that as we, when we circle back to this, that we can augment, you know, we speak a little bit then to the clarity around the denominator.
Yes, certainly. And you hit the nail on the head, Board Member Jones, you know, in terms of the differentiation between enrollment for 4.2A, right, with our ninth graders, and then in the passing scores for 4.2B, 4.2C. And that is, yes, there is, there's the opportunity that we can dig that level deeper to be able to have that comparison from the total enrolled versus total passing. I can see where the confusion lies in. I'll kind of zoom back out. The challenge that we have, and challenge and opportunity, right? Because what we're looking at in this month is our interim goals, which we have the ability kind of midstream to, we're kind of gathering learning, right? This is kind of in real time, the temperature check and realizing some of the challenges that we get from taking our best attempt at finding these temperature checks, these progress monitors, to get to board goal four, which if you go back to that first page, right? The challenge really lies in just finding those formative measures that will get us to the percentage of high school students who score at the college and career readiness level, IB, AP, dual credit, ACT, SAT. I say all of that to say, this is, you know, this is our best attempt at this time period, but we have an opportunity mid-tier to see how we're measuring, to adjust, make those changes, and make sure, is it still the appropriate measure next year, right? We're looking at 2022 to 2024 with this interim goal. Well noted, those data points, we can get that in our next round where we come back and revisit this data. And I think it's an opportunity to say, is this the right thing to be measuring to get us to ultimately our board goal at the end of the day?
So on table two, for instance, if we're on the 10th grade students passing at least one AP exam, is that the percent who actually took the exam? Or is that the percent of the students who were enrolled in the course who passed?
Right. It's my understanding, I look for and not, that it is the number of students that passed the test.
That is not reflected.
So not total, and so would not reflect enrollment.
No, 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 but what is the denominator?
Tested.
Tested. It's the ones who tested. So we, what we don't know is how many kids enrolled in the course, but for whatever reason didn't take the test.
Right. And it is certainly possible to be able to have those.
Easy add-on. That's an easy add-on.
Yes, ma'am.
To the part before we jump to Cynthia, just talking about the data piece. Yeah, for table one as well, just making sure that I'm clear on it, because I know there's some that we were talking about. It says percentage of ninth grade students enrolled in at least one AP course by subgroup. And so the first line says all subgroups, there's a definitive number of 623. So that is saying 623 ninth graders enrolled into one AP course?
That is correct. First time, first time ninth graders.
Okay, yeah, just period, ninth graders, because it doesn't differentiate between a first or a second time. So just ninth graders, period.
So if they, if this is the student's first year enrolled in ninth grade, and they are enrolled in at least one AP course, that would be, that would be that end number there, correct, team?
All right. So just, I'm just following, so the definitive number of 623 ninth graders were enrolled in at least one AP course. And then let's take the line item of black students in that subgroup, there's a number of 240. So out of that 623, 240 of those students were black, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
But that percentage is actually 38 point something percent and not 9.4%. So what does the 9.4% represent?
Do you want to come up and share? I'm going to bring up our team so I don't misrepresent.
It's not, right, because 240 students.
The denominator shifts to the number of black stu, the number of the subgroup is the denominator, not the number of students in all. So like for Asian students, 60% is 15, but the denominator is however many Asian students were in the ninth grade.
Okay, and what is that num, I mean, I could do the calc, I could do the math on it, but it's confusing.
Again, another.
It's confusing, so.
Yes.
Yeah, like the total, yeah, total number to understand, because if you put the definitive number of 240, one would assume that you're saying 240 black students of ninth graders of that 623.
Right.
So that corresponding percentage is 38 point something percent versus the 9.4. So it just tells two, the numbers tell two different stories.
I understand, yes. Received, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Sorry, Cynthia, I just wanted to get, thank.
That's okay. All my questions were around improving access and participation in higher level classes, and I think Katie already addressed that.
Thanks. And Aretha?
So I just want to slightly tweak the way that question is answered. In terms of, I want to hear more in terms of your understanding interpretation of that dramatic difference in dual enrollment versus AP, IB for African-American population. Because when you look at it in terms, the N of earning at least one dual enrollment credit is 123, and black students represent 110 of that. So that is a very, a very large share. So I would just like you to talk a little bit more about your understanding and interpretation of that. You touched on it a little bit, but I want to elevate it a little more.
And just for clarity, more discussion around my interpretation of the why or my interpretation of opportunity or combination of the two. Combination of the two, so we'll say both. So again, I think we're talking about table three, where we look at the 82.7% of students who have elected to choose dual enrollment and at learning, and earning at least one credit, and so, earning at least one credit. But part of what I was sharing was the importance of not necessarily looking at this, so looking at it in two ways. Number one, I want to make certain that we're clear that students have a very good understanding of the opportunity to choose AP, IB, or dual enrollment. And when they elect to choose dual enrollment, and I'm speaking specifically relative to the subgroup here because it had the highest percentage and less representation in IB, that oftentimes that is intentional in the space where students have strategy around college completion early, eliminating college, college course costs as well. Not to suggest that that is not the case as well for the AP exam, but once students have passed a dual enrollment course, 70 or higher, and they know if they've identified a school, that that's already been accepted, that is oftentimes very intentional. But I also named that students need to have the ability to fully understand what their options are. We want to make certain that all of our scholars clearly note if that's an option for them, why IB could be meaningful, why advanced placement could be meaningful, and why dual enrollment could be, but then to identify what is the best plan for them and their post-secondary option if they choose to go that route. I think what I also said earlier was a lot of this discussion does happen at the middle grades level before students are in high school, especially in places where we can start AP as early as ninth grade, making certain that there are more courses of interest at that level. Tell me if you need me to say more, if there's something that you're looking for me to touch on, and I'd be glad to do just that.
Leaning in, in courses of interest.
Yes.
Do we do an evaluation of the courses that our students take at a dual enrollment level to see, you know, what compare and contrast? Like, do we find that it's classes like before now African-American history that wasn't necessarily offered, or French that may not have been offered at that school? Or is it, do we, are we looking to see what, what are they taking?
Let me share, say something, and then I'll toss it to them to be much more specific to be day-to-day in the field. The College Board does provide a very solid inventory and assessment and an auditing of that for us to have a sense of what interest might look like, or what course selection has been, and what that performance looks like, and the breakout of that data. Now, from the dual enrollment lens, I am going to toss, because it would be better responded to by either Ms. Brown or Dr. Freeman in that regard, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, Board Member Baldwin, I just want to go back to your original question about the dual enrollment, and just remind you that the Washington and of course Carver Early College, over 50% of those students take dual enrollment. So a large portion of those numbers are reflected in the data are Washington and Carver. And then we also have Best in CSK that has a small number, but that's about four high schools that focus primarily on dual enrollment, so you see it in the numbers. So just wanted to add that.
And ACCA, have we not acknowledged ACCA as well in that space of opportunities?
During as well.
Okay.
It's 50% of the students. 50% of the students in dual enrollment are coming from those two schools, so not 50% of the schools. Does that make sense? Okay. So 50% of the enrollment in dual enrollment comes from primarily Carver Early College and Washington?
Which has, Washington has a specific early college program.
Exactly, exactly. So then as far as the dual enrollment courses, they have options, right? So depending on the Atlanta College and Career Academy, there's two courses in particular that you take when you go there. What's offered at Clark versus what's offered at Georgia State, they absolutely have choice. We really dig into dual enrollment numbers after their first semester when we actually have credits, because some students kind of fluctuate their enrollment and participation. So now that transcripts are about done, we'll be able to dig in to see the percentage of students that are doing academic or core or non-core classes for, for credit.
And then may I just speak to, just bringing it back to the student and the annual review of a student's schedule that should be happening as they're thinking about selecting courses beyond prerequisite or a series of course offerings, but to meet within their post, their high school counselor, to have a sense of success in dual enrollment or interest in a different class, that too in their individual guidance session, not so much an assessment that's a collective cohort assessment, but even for the student and his or her experience, that's an important step that I don't want to omit in this process as well. To help them with thoughtful planning around what course will be next, should also be done in concert with the parent, but if not in concert with the parent, it still should be done, yeah, each year in preparation for ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade course selection.
Couple of, couple of the questions just for clarity and understanding. So ninth grade AP course offerings is only offered to ninth graders at Jackson and North Atlanta?
Right.
No, ma'am.
Okay. Well, yeah, I would just ask, because there was a point that someone said that it was, something was only offered at those schools, and so I was going to, yeah, clarify the point because I don't want to confuse.
That's the 11th grade IB business course.
Okay. The 11th grade IB business course is only, okay.
It's only offered at those two schools for 11th grade.
So ninth grade, ninth, every high school has AP courses that are available to ninth grade, ninth to 12th grade?
Every school has AP courses that are available. Their recommendation is not always for a ninth grade student to take a higher content area, but it happens. So that list that Dr. Herring read where the majority of students are taking AP Human Geography, that's a College Board recommendation that we try to follow. The content is appropriate for that grade level, but there are students in ninth grade that take AP Stat.
That's exactly right.
And so we don't really control that, we don't necessarily recommend it, but it does happen, and that's where some of those odd numbers, courses come in.
And let me just balance that with you, Dr. Freeman. So I want to bring this back to, here again, to the conversation and simply not minimize how that can come to be. So I appreciate that you named, so the AP Human, Human Geography is the recommended ninth grade course if a student elects to start AP classes in the ninth grade. If a student has elected to do AP Stat, as you've named, or something else, that's an advanced placement course, that is absolutely a conversation with the student, the parent, and the teacher as well. We have to be thoughtful about, here again, the mindset of not gatekeeping, also setting a student up for success, and then at the end of the day, being able to place that student in that, in that course of interest. So just all of the dynamics that come to that. Thank you for the way you answered it. All schools have AP courses, there's some nuances to that ninth grade space, and a recommendation around the ninth grade course. Yes, ma'am.
Is there any nuances to the offerings at the school period? So taking the ninth grade out, yeah. So is there even nuances around what's offering at the schools? I mean, to be, because in all fairness, that what we, that's what we hear from, from parents, like, that's what we hear about the inequity in offerings. Yes.
I'm glad that this is a conversation. I'm glad that we are having this conversation. I want to lift a couple of things. I'm going to go back to what Jackson High School as a current example, with their current offering of AP African-American history that is unique only to Jackson High School, and unique across the country, as, across the state as well.
We're the only school in Georgia to be identified for the pilot, which is this year.
Right, as a, for an AP African-American history.
African-American Studies, yes.
And what we will learn from that will be relative to interest and relevance and rigor for students. But I use that as an example to say, there is always then the opportunity to look at AP course offerings, to identify what student interest is in that, because that's really where that's grounded, where the student interest is, how, what it takes to make a course, which also goes back to something that I shared around the creativity of, well, if only three students want the course, how do we still make it available for those three students? And our need to innovate, which we are embracing and working through the innovation redesign team and continuous improvement team to figure out how to do that, whether it's offered or not. But the greatest level of inventory there is student interest and us with having the opportunity to make it available. Yes, we can provide the catalog or the offering list of all of the courses, but for new courses to, to surface, or an offering for a course that's, that's not there, is definitely some due diligence on our part.
And there's beauty in the AP potential report, because we see it at the schools, but also for the district. And so we're seeing courses like AP Art History. Significant amount of students showing potential for a course like that, where they may not even offer much art, but there's potential. The same thing is for AP Seminar. So we are working with the schools to kind of look at some of the non-traditional courses and where the students show potential consistently, where we can roll out more courses and trying to find that sweet spot of the time of, during their ninth through 12th grade years, that's the right time to take it and balance it with the other course expectations.
Yeah, so earlier you mentioned, I guess, the AP courses being offered virtually, and so when you name that student interest part with that change, if we are able to open up more courses that would be available to students virtually in that way?
Oh, absolutely. I think that's an easy answer, but we are exploring that. But certainly, the more we can make it available, it changes interest, and it changes the ability for us to enroll more students in that regard. That's something we're working towards, Board Member Johnson, but, but part of that has been our first pilot of that at the middle grades level, and the expansion intentionally around advanced courses at the secondary level. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am?
Part of the, looking at the report, part of the board support on administrative strategy is thinking about other alternative indicators of college and career readiness beyond that. And so, understanding, doing a deeper dive into what that looks like and the impact of that. Understanding what was also, time to implement test prep strategies? Is that something for the board? Is that administrative side of working with counselors and scheduling?
For the board, it's more of a funding thing. Because we do, you know, contract with some outside vendors as we build the capacity of our own teachers to be able to offer the instruction. So, for this current school year, we've taken a significant portion of our budget to provide the third-party vendors to push in virtually or in person to the SAT or ACT prep classes to work with our students. And so, we're using this year as a pilot to kind of see which of the vendors are best fit for our students. But also monitoring the performance and outcomes of their participation.
Got it. I was like, how do we approve time? Because the third one was as far as board being able to support and, I mean, ensure adequate resources to support the strategy, which sounds like we need to do some deeper work into defining what college and career readiness. So, one of the questions that I have in regards to just understanding what we need to be successful, looking at the goals that we set, but also looking at the data and some of the challenges there. Are we really safe to say that we're on target? I can say we're on target number-wise, but.
That on target is very specific to the board goal, the data point. It's still a snapshot. Are we safe to say we're on target based on the snapshot of what we're saying at this moment in time? But as a part of what I say in this communication is that, and then in the spring, we're going to come back and we're going to revisit and review it. But I think the broader question about being on target is if we still have a lot more work to do. So, by no means will I suggest that we have problem solve for that and that there's not more opportunity for us. Whether it is the student engagement, student voice piece, whether it is the way that we interface and communicate with parents, whether it's the way we've looked at scheduling at the middle and high school grade levels. There's still more work to do. But the being on target was simply the snapshot call out of what our data says, where we are relative to that board goal today.
Thank you. Katie's last, make it real quick, because we're over.
Real quick. To follow up on about expanding access to AP, do we have a time that we'll get that information as to where we are in expansion? Like timeframe, like a follow-up? Just for virtual, I know we're looking at that. But is, do we kind of know when we might have? Because we even know there's more demand than we have AP classes available. And we keep hearing that, like, we heard that in the cluster chat.
I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver on a timeline. But certainly that as we move through this semester, because even some of the pre-AP courses that we talked about push us into the latter part of this year. Just a commitment of knowing that we are putting structures in place. And then we'll work to establish a timeline. I jumped ahead of you, Ms. Brown, but if you want to add to that. I just want to be careful about that. Yes, ma'am?
Absolutely. Because we're looking at budget, looking at staffing. And so, we're also working with schools to look at their current offerings around AP. And so, we are looking to expand. But again, those PSAT reports will give us the impetus for what additional courses we offer. But I know the Teaching and Learning Department has been working with schools, because we do want to increase access across different schools. Because one school may have twenty-eight offerings and one school may have ten. And so, we want to increase students' access to more advanced coursework. And so, we'll work throughout the remainder of this year, Dr. Herring, and we'll get back to you about a potential timeline.
And then I'll make sure we convey that to the board appropriately.
And not to rush it, just kind of understanding. And then to Board Chair Collins' point about the outcome piece, looking forward to maybe seeing how we can track data for students in all these different programs pathways for entrance into college or what have you, leaving high school.
To and through.
In terms of seeing, is, you know, this a great way or the best way to measure preparedness? So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. To be continued for sure. Dr. Herring, this?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Board Chairwoman. This concludes our presentations for this afternoon.
Great. Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for your reports. Madam General Counsel, is there a reason for the board to retreat into executive session?
Yes, Madam Chair. The board needs to discuss land legal and student matters.
All right. May I now have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss legal and real estate matters? And student discipline? And student matters?
So moved.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Rhonda Balden, second by Cynthia Briscoe Brown. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now go into executive session. Thank you so much.
Hello. I am your Board of Education District One Representative, Katie Howard. And I'm happy to share our January reminders with you. A week from today, Monday, January sixteenth, we proudly celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. This year's theme, it starts with me. Cultivating a beloved community mindset to transform unjust systems is a call to action, encouraging us to honor the life and legacy of an illustrious APS alum by giving back to our communities and to the causes that matter to each of us. Although our schools and offices will be closed on MLK Day, I encourage you to make it a day on and not a day off. You can find several volunteer opportunities and learn more about how our community honors Dr. King. Each January, we observe National Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And on Wednesday, January eleventh, Atlanta Public Schools will recognize Human Trafficking Awareness Day. APS is doing our part to raise awareness on this pressing issue by teaching our students and staff how to combat and spot the signs of human trafficking, a global problem which has affected nearly twenty-five million people with more than fifty percent of victims estimated to be under the age of eighteen. Staff will participate in a capacity-building event on Human Trafficking Awareness Day to learn more about the impacts of trafficking and ways to aid the fight against it. I want to remind everyone to please call the National Human Trafficking Hotline at one eight 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 three seven three seven eight eight eight. Or simply dial nine one one to report a tip if you suspect a case of human trafficking. And join us in wearing blue on January eleventh as we support and stand in solidarity with the victims of human trafficking and those who continue the work to prevent it. I am happy to share that your Atlanta Public Schools Board of Education continues to engage the individual and collective perspectives of our scholars as part of our student outcomes-focused governance model. Over the next few months, board members will visit every APS high school for our Breakfast with the Board initiative. These sessions are facilitated by our Student Advisory Council. Scholars will have the opportunity to share their perspectives on issues impacting them, as well as exchange ideas directly with board members. Last year, we made twelve Breakfast with the Board stops and connected with more than five hundred students across all clusters. Our thrust to elevate student voice across APS is creating gains for our community with new programs like our telehealth service for mental and physical health support, which was implemented as a direct result of student engagement. I am personally excited for the opportunity to participate in many of our Breakfast with the Board events. Don't forget to stay informed on the latest happenings across Atlanta Public Schools via our district website and across all social media. Thank you.
Greetings, APS family. I want to first wish you a purposeful and productive new year. I look forward to our continued engagement and partnership as APS delivers on our mission to nurture and graduate global-minded scholars ready for college, career, and life. We had much to celebrate as we closed out 2022 with many proud accomplishments. And there are even greater successes to realize together in 2023. Last year, our partners showed up for Atlanta Public Schools, and I am confident that they will continue to do so. Here are a few partnership highlights since our December board meeting. Siena and Digital Promise. Thanks to Siena Corporation and Digital Promise, Mays High School, Coretta Scott King Young Women's Leadership Academy, and BAST Academy were each awarded grants valued at forty-five thousand dollars in the Siena Solutions Challenge, where students solve real-world problems identified within the United Nations Seventeen Sustainable Development Goals. Students at these schools will have access to cutting-edge digital tools and resources in new maker spaces as part of this program, which is geared toward professional learning for teachers, mentorship for student teams, and state-of-the-art technology labs that support hands-on inquiry-based learning. Volunteers from ADP, a leading provider of HR software and services, visited Bunch Middle School on December ninth for the school's exciting Hour of Code event. Our scholars were introduced to the basics of coding and computer science as part of the program which is supported by over four hundred partners and two hundred thousand educators worldwide. Through the generous support of Vision to Learn and our very own Atlanta Hawks, students at Dunbar Elementary School benefited from eye exams and vision screenings with more than fifty receiving free corrective glasses in December. The impact of this initiative cannot be overstated as the gift of sight removes a critical barrier to learning for these scholars and aids their success both inside and outside of the classroom. Our district-wide AMP UP APS Equity Survey window has been extended to Friday, January thirteenth. If you have not yet taken the survey, I invite you to follow the instructions on screen and please take it today. I want to thank every student, teacher, support staff, and each member of our APS community who has already shared their perspectives during this process. The insights we receive will help shape our work to advance equity across the district in ways that better support our scholars, schools, and families. I'm happy to note that Tekeisha Hollis has been named as the new principal of David T. Howard Middle School. She is currently serving as an administrator at Sylvan Middle School and will assume her new role as principal at Howard on January seventeenth, 2023. Hollis brings to Howard Middle more than eighteen years of experience as an educator, including seven years serving in our Midtown Cluster. She is a dedicated leader who is focused on maximizing the potential of all students and educators. Meetings will be scheduled this month to introduce Principal Hollis to the school community. So, stay tuned, Howard families. I am excited to announce that ten, that's right, ten Atlanta Public School scholars have been awarded four-year full-tuition scholarships for post-secondary studies from the Posse Foundation. This is incredible, and we are so proud of them. Please join me in congratulating our outstanding students who were recognized at the Posse Atlanta Award Ceremony last Thursday. Avery Adams from Kip Collegiate to Texas A&amp;M University. Dash Wang from North Atlanta High School to George Washington University. Isabella Luce from Midtown High School to George Washington University. Kamora Butler from Mays High School to Texas A&amp;M University. Olivia Huff from Maynard Jackson High School to Bard College. And the following five scholars from Drew Charter Senior Academy. Eden Eisenhower to the College of Worcester. Coranza Davis to the College of Worcester. Krista Augustine to Brandeis University. Eleanor Jones to Brandeis University. And Ty Daniel to Boston University. These APS scholars collectively represent over two million dollars in scholarships earned as they head off to chosen colleges and universities. We are so proud of them. The Posse Foundation identifies, recruits, and trains students with the extraordinary potential to become leaders in every field. Our scholars join a pool of just over eight hundred scholarship recipients nationwide, selected this year from a pool of nearly seventeen thousand nominees. Way to go to our Atlanta Public School scholars. On Saturday, January twenty-eighth, from nine AM to one PM, we will be holding our annual Helen Ruffin Reading Bowl. And volunteers are still needed. Scan the QR code on screen and sign up to support scholars from over fifty participating schools. We always have an extraordinary amount of volunteers, so we welcome you back to serve in this capacity. Help us as we help our scholars deepen their love for reading as many move up to the Metro Atlanta and State Reading Championships. Get ready for the 2023 APS Technology and Innovation Competition. We are excited to return to our in-person format on Saturday, January twenty-first. The creativity and critical thinking skills of our third to twelfth grade scholars will be on full display as they showcase groundbreaking technology projects in a range of categories. We need volunteers to help judge the two hundred and eighty project submissions already received. All first-place winners will advance to represent APS at the Georgia Student Technology Competition, the highest-level student technology competition in the state. Scan the QR code on screen or visit apstic23.webly.com for more information. Join us live online for Mission Possible APS 2036, this year's State of the District presentation on Thursday, January nineteenth at eleven AM. This flagship district event provides the opportunity for every APS stakeholder to hear key updates on student performance as well as our strategies for. hear key updates on student performance, as well as our strategies for accelerating academic achievement through innovation, intervention, and partnerships. This year's experience will be exciting, interactive, and engaging. Please mark your calendar and plan to join us as we journey forward to co-create an exciting future for our district, our Scholars, our city, and our state. I want to give a shout-out to our hard-working facilities staff, many of whom worked tirelessly throughout the December holiday break maintaining our building infrastructure. These amazing staff members go above and beyond for our district and Scholars three hundred sixty-five days a year, and I want to recognize and commend their efforts to keep our facilities operational and ready for a seamless beginning to 2023. Thank you to all of you, our facilities staff. You are greatly appreciated. I will end this month's update as I began, expressing my abiding hope that we will reconnect, re-engage, and renew our commitment together to support our critical mission of creating a future filled with hope, promise, and possibilities for our communities, and the more than fifty thousand Scholars we have the honor to serve.
Executive session has ended, and we will resume the regular meeting of the Atlanta Board of Education. We do not have any special recognitions by board members this evening, but we do have one special recognition, just with also acknowledging again Jessica Johnson joining us as the new at-large seat-nine member. And so now let's proceed with the community meeting. Mr. Gaither, please read the instructions for tonight's meeting.
Good evening, and welcome to the public comment portion of tonight's agenda. In just a few moments, the board will begin hearing from those who signed up to speak by five fifty PM. The board welcomes your comments, but before we get started, please take note of the following guidelines on how public comment is conducted. The board has allocated one hour for public comment, and each speaker will only be allowed to speak once for a total of two minutes. The board may elect to hear community comments in any order or sequence, and is not limited by the order of the sign-up sheets. All speakers presenting highly detailed information are asked to put their comments, and writing and comment cards are available for those wishing to do so. In order to maintain meeting decorum, follow appropriate protocols, protect the confidentiality of students, and ensure impartiality. The board will not hear comments on matters involving individual students, parents, or the character, professional competency, or the physical or mental health of any individual. Also, the board will not hear public comment on personnel matters that specifically include the names or titles of employees. This includes, but is not limited to, contract nonrenewals, position abolishment, the hiring or firing of staff, and investigative proceedings regarding allegations of misconduct. Comments regarding personnel issues should be sent in writing to Atlanta Board of Education, one thirty Trinity Avenue Southwest, Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three zero three, or via email at boardcomments@atlantapublicschools.us. Finally, in order to maintain meeting decorum and to ensure all comments can be heard by the board, applause, cheering, jeering, or speech that defames individuals or disrupts the meeting should be reframed from, and may be cause for removal, adjournment of the meeting, and/or suspension from attending future Atlanta Board of Education events, hearings, meetings, and other proceedings. With that being said, I would like to call our first speaker, Doug Alvine, for two minutes.
Can you hear me?
We can. You have two minutes.
Okay, two minutes. So basically, I'm trying to help get sidewalks for North Atlanta High School. There's no sidewalk. It is extremely dangerous, a huge risk. Twenty-three hundred students, your largest school. I've had a petition in 2018 with almost a thousand supporters, and there's no leadership or anything like that. Literally yesterday, I met in person one-on-one with Mayor Andre Dickens. He has strong support, and I'm going to report back to him based on what you guys tell me today. I'm also with Jason Estevez, has reached out to me for an update. The funding group, I can't think of their name, they reached out to me for an update from GDOT. We need leadership. This is your school. I've got pictures of kids walking in the highway. There's no sidewalks. You know, I've got Quanda, who's the chief operating officer for the mayor, who basically has talked to Mary Norwood, and he can't understand why it hasn't been resolved and not gathering any traction yet. So what can you guys do? This is the largest high school you have, and yet it is the most dangerous high school that you have, and you cannot walk there. Twenty-three hundred students. So I've got a lot of stuff. I've got the eight hundred and fifty people that have asked for help on sidewalks. I've got pictures, I've got drawings. What can I do to help push this forward and make it happen? Everyone's supportive, but I need leadership.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, you may finish. All right, thank you. Paul McMurray, if you are still planning to speak, we ask that you sign in virtually into Zoom. Our next speaker will be Zachary Murray for two minutes, followed by Monique Nunnely. Ms. Nunnely, if you'll make your way up to the front, after this speaker, you will be next. Mr. Murray, you have two minutes.
Okay, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Zach Murray. I'm a resident of Lakewood Heights. I'm speaking tonight to exercise my First Amendment right to encourage the board members to remove Lakewood Heights Elementary School from the disposal list, and to work with the community to create an education solution for our community. As you all are aware, this is the last public facility remaining in our neighborhood, and the Carver Cluster and South Atlanta Cluster are very much in need of education solutions. It feels as if this board has taken a hands-off approach as it pertains to many of the schools in my neighborhood, and we want to see you all make it right and really work to create solutions that help to improve the outcomes of young people in the Carver Cluster and in the city as a whole, and that begins with engaging the community on what should be done with facilities that are surplus. And I don't think the process has really informed enough of our neighbors, many of whom are new since the last census, who've moved to this community in the last two years, who want to stay, who want to be invested in the community, but don't see a place for their children in the schools as they are currently set up. And so once again, want to encourage you all to take the bold step in action of actually reaching out to community in a cluster as in need as ours, to see what can be done to help innovate and improve the outcomes of our students, and I do believe that begins with partnering with the Lakewood Heights community and our residents to figure out what can be done to correct the wrong. That school, in my opinion, should have never been closed in 2004, but seeing that we're almost twenty years into it being closed, what can APS do to make it right, to help invest in our cluster, and give us the resources that every young person has? That building collectively belongs to the residents of this community, especially the children. They are the owners of that property and have not been sufficiently engaged to see what the future should be for that property, and I want to make sure that happens before you all make a decision to do something with it. And so encourage you all to take bold action tonight, remove the property from the list, and engage the-
All right, thank you. We've reached the time boundary. If you have more you'd like to share, if you will, please submit that in writing. We'll ensure that the board has access to that. Ms. Nunnely, you have two minutes, followed by Omar Ali. Omar Ali, if you'll make your way up to the front, you're in the queue.
Thank you all so much. I'm Monique Nunnely. I'm the NPY Education Chair, which sits in the Lakewood Heights community, and I would just like to welcome our new board member. Welcome, and thank you all for being here today. I appreciate all board members, including Katie Howard and Ishai Collins and other members of this esteemed body who joined us at the Lakewood Heights community meeting, and we encourage at the NPY level for you to continue to engage with us about this surplus property that has been delinquent or vacant for the past two decades. So we are asking that you continue to engage us, continue to reach out to us as decisions are made about this surplus property that, to my knowledge, has been surplus since 2007. And so we are interested in having communications with you about this property for the South Atlanta and Carver Cluster. We are also interested in talking about the Thomasville Heights Elementary School and understanding what will that property be done with so that we understand collectively what is happening in our community. And we also, as a body, are looking to understand more about what's happening with purpose-built schools and having more transparency in that arena. We're in budget season, and for the three schools and seventeen hundred kids, we actually don't get a budget from purpose-built schools. Our go-teams get a very reduced budget experience, and I'm not sure if you're aware, but we have no control over what happens to our schools, and in this case, we are looking not just for input and support with this vacant school, but the schools that are currently occupied. So I stand here for the existing body of students that still exist in our schools where we have no transparency of what happens with that, and I've asked several people in the administration, especially in the Innovation Department, how do we get a budget, a fully fleshed-out budget for purpose-built schools? And the answer has been a resounding, you don't. I've requested open records, nothing. So we have seventeen hundred students with no transparency of understanding what's happening. We appreciate you, though. Continue the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Omar Ali for two minutes, followed by Heather Graybill. Ms. Graybill, if you may make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Good evening. My name is Omar Ali. I came to the Lakewood area four years ago, and subsequently, we've had over twelve to twenty meetings with the community to determine a path forward for Lakewood. I also want to thank the APS Board for meeting with the community over the past three years to determine what is the best thing that we need to do for the Lakewood Elementary School. Upon meeting with the community for the past twelve times over four years, we came to understand that the biggest issue in the Lakewood community is blight, and we all understand that blight leads to crime, lack of jobs, lack of economics. So we commissioned a study to see what is the path to move forward to bring the community to a place that it needs to be. We found out quickly that within a mile radius of the Lakewood Elementary School, there is a seventy percent blight within a mile radius. That is a staggering number. Out of that seventy percent, that leaves over thirty percent. That thirty percent, only ten percent are homeowners in the Lakewood area. So it's a recipe for disaster. And then right in the middle of that is the Lakewood Elementary School, to where I have personally witnessed and attempted rape, several assaults on the school grounds, and then just recently, a year ago, a murder almost spilled onto the school ground. So in order to insert social vitality back into the Lakewood area, the main thing that we can do is revitalize that particular area with jobs, with more commercial buildings, and the Lakewood Elementary School is a huge thorn in the majority of the community's opinion. So we would like something to be done with that to where it will inject more social vitality back into the community. Again, we've met with the community for the past four years, twelve different meetings, and as a consensus, we want that school building to be turned into a commercial vitality. So thank you for your leadership, and thank you for your continued leadership.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Heather Graybill for two minutes, followed by Antonio Glass. Mr. Glass, if you make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Heather Graybill, and tonight I'm speaking to you as a resident and homeowner in Lakewood Heights. I'm urging you to remove Lakewood Heights from your list of properties to dispose of. I have growing concern over APS's lack of investment within Lakewood and the Carver Cluster as a whole. I've worked actively to engage community members and participate in community building alongside APS to help reverse this. I want a community that supports our children and our families, and I'm sure, as we all understand here, education is one of the main pillars to do that. I want a neighborhood and a local education system that I could send my children to without a second thought. I'm urging you to engage the community and work with us to create a vision that's in the best interest of the residents, families, and children that live in Lakewood Heights. Along with other concerned community members, I've spent the past several weekends going door-to-door in the community to raise awareness of the potential sale of the school. After going to over a hundred houses in the neighborhood, one thing has remained clear: the community has almost no knowledge that you're voting to dispose of one of our last public resources. I spoke to three people who knew. This is a matter of public interest. I live about fifteen hundred feet away from the elementary school, yet APS did not issue direct notification to myself nor to residents impacted by the potential sale of the sixteen properties you're voting to dispose of tonight. These are our public goods. As a taxpayer, I want to see the taxes I'm paying invested within my community. By voting to dispose of Lakewood Elementary, you're opting to sell one of our neighborhood's last public goods. It's hard to invest tax dollars in a community that has no public goods left to invest in. I'm urging to remove Lakewood Elementary from your list for disposal, and asking that you notify and engage our community to create something for Lakewood that provides public benefits to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Antonio Glass for two minutes, followed by Marcus Bryce. If you'll make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated. Mr. Glass, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, board. I'm Antonio Glass. I am a resident and a homeowner in Lakewood Heights. I have been in the community for ten years, and I'm here before the board about the nineteen thirteen historic Lakewood Elementary School property on the facility's master plan disposal list. Lakewood Heights needs its historic public goods, which includes the use of one neighborhood school that we have, to help keep our public goods and community assets as developments like the GM plant that comes our way. I'm asking the board tonight if you would come to our community to brainstorm together on how to keep and to use the school for our children, as this kind of conversation was decidedly not part of the facility's master plan process. I'm asking you to remove Lakewood Heights Elementary School from the list, partner with the community on the best public use of the property for our children and families. Old Fourth Ward had a say when David T. Howard School was about to be closed. Our community deserves the same opportunity to work with APS to preserve our school for our kids. If you dispose of our National Historic Registry School and preserve Howard, and use the proceeds from the sale from our neighborhood for public access, assets to fund more additional clusters like Midtown and Jackson, we all have to ask ourselves, what does equity mean? So I just close and ask, we need our school, please do not sell it. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcus Bryce for two minutes, and then we will go back to our virtual.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a resident of Lakewood Heights and also a native of Atlanta, and also a local business owner, and the school being made for profit other than the elementary school for our community. I would like to see that the changes that will come to our community to help keep this elementary school in our community, because it has been shut down for so many years, and it's not being used in a way that we need to use it for our community. And versus helping our community, we stand on growth and innovation to enhance our school system and to bring positive change, to keep school and bring up-to-date and focus on programs for our children to learn and to enjoy impactful upbringing in the elementary school system, to start a diversity in teaching our youth in a way that will mold them into adults, with us as a community coming together and making a plan of action. I'm urging you to remove Lakewood Elementary School from the list, from disposal, and asking that notify, engage our community, create something for Lakewood that provides public benefits for all and growth for our children as they become the new adults of the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Travis Foster for two minutes. Mr. Foster, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, you have two minutes.
Hi, yes, good evening. If the board decides to sell the property of Lakewood Elementary, which is about a block and a half away from our house, I ask that you sell it to a developer who has the best interest of the community. My wife and I have lived over here for about five years now, and this is our first home, and we wanted to build our lives and plant some roots in Lakewood Heights. What people don't know is that that building is actually two separate buildings. So you could actually, you could do a zero-to-five pre-K in one separate building, and in the second building, which faces Sawtooth, you could do mixed-use or residential housing. the second building, which faces Sawtooth, you could do mixed-use or residential housing. And personally, I think that housing should be geared towards our city workers, our police, our firemen, our teachers, our public works, workers, so people can actually afford to live in the city and be close to their jobs. It could be a win-win for everybody. And then if it's done properly, even as the neighborhood populates, you could do a zero-to-fifth grade as well. So I just hope that you consider what I'm asking for and what the community needs and wants before you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Sabah Talib for two minutes, followed by Paula Cooper Smith. Ms. Cooper Smith, if you make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated. Sabah Talib, you have two minutes.
Hello. Can you hear us? If you can hear us, we can hear you. We're asking you to unmute at this moment. And we'll come back. Paula Cooper Smith, you're up in the queue.
Good evening, Board members, and congratulations, Ms. Johnson. My name is Paula Cooper Smith, and I am here as the Lakewood Heights homeowner and resident. I'm here to express my opinion to my elected representatives on a public matter. I hope that you will please pull the 1913 historic Lakewood Heights School property from the facility's master plan list. As I live two doors down from the school, two doors back, I had hoped our facility's master plan would have a place for taxpayer engagement. There was not that place. We had also hoped to be able to engage during the facility's master plan to vision what we could do with the historic building, and that opportunity did not arise. Also, the facility's master plan data speaks more to student capture rate numbers only. It does not speak to the number of families who avoid our schools and leave when their children become close to school age or they're born, because there isn't something there for them right now. Doesn't speak to the unprecedented number of families and young people who have moved to our community during the pandemic. The average time is two years. It's amazing. It's a just-add-water situation. And the number of development projects that are planned for our community, for instance, the GM project that will be 2,000 residences, two blocks from the school, and that's a big deal. Because we had information gaps, neighbors created a petition that's on its way to 400 signatures. Neighbors visited over 100 doors, asking community members if they knew about the school being sold, and the answer was consistently, no. What would they like to do with it? Keep it for our children? That was resoundingly the answer. Over 100 doors. Please help us save our historic school for our historic neighborhood's children. The greatest need that does come up is early learning, which would give our cluster the intense help it needs when it needs a boost right now, because we do need our families. We need them to stay, and we need them to invest in us and in you. Thank you very much for your time.
I do want to revisit Paul McMurray. If you're still planning to speak, we're asking that you sign in, raise your hands so that we can identify you, as well as Shandrea Gay. If you're in the queue, if you will raise your hands so that we can identify you. I would now go to Akeem Williams for two minutes. Mr. Williams, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Where's the loving, I'm sorry, where's the caring culture of trust and collaboration? This past week, I was asked, what is my purpose? My purpose is to simply advocate for my sisters to ensure they receive the best education possible, even though APSL has consistently denied them. Why is APSL making it so hard to simply advocate and hold APS leaders accountable? In Atlanta Public Schools, 79% of students are Black, but they account for 91% of disciplinary actions. The manipulation and cover-up of data and omening against children needs to stop. Atlanta Public Schools' leadership is deteriorating when a leader doesn't possess basic qualities like integrity, doing the right thing even when no one is watching, empathy, the ability to understand others, see from their point of view, and feel what they're feeling, and honesty, help tackle ambiguities, which is a common obstacle for individuals amongst the APS leadership team. I'm just going to read this poem. It's a poem by Dr. Mays that stands out to me. "I only have just a minute, just 60 seconds in it. Forced upon me, can't refuse it, didn't seek it and didn't choose it, but it's up to me to use it. I must suffer if I lose it, give account if I abuse it. Just a tiny little minute, but eternity is in it." It was a poem by Dr. Mays. I feel as if you all need to really pound in on a lot of the social injustice within Atlanta Public Schools and the students. Thank you.
Retry Sabah Talib for two minutes. Sabah Talib, can you hear us?
Hello and good afternoon, all. My name is Maya Davis. I'm a native of Atlanta, Georgia, and I am a graduate of Woodward Academy and Xavier University of Louisiana. I'm a descendant of six generations of educators, both principals and teachers alike. I decided that I would follow in the footsteps of those before me by working with children within the Atlanta Public School system and have paid dearly for it. I wanted to take my knowledge from both institutions and put it to use to better the African-American community. However, my experience working with Atlanta Public Schools and Cascade Elementary can best be described as tumultuous. In my hand, I have proof of a complaint that I filed with Human Resources. I received no response and instead was terminated a week later. This is a clear case of retaliation that needs to be corrected by Atlanta Public Schools. Within the system of APS exists a culture of fear, retaliation, and intimidation. Not only that, but the educational model that is currently being implemented is nothing short of inadequate. This adversely affects the African-American community, as 82% of the student population of APS is Black. This is systematically disenfranchising our communities. Prior to this, I had been dealing with harassment, discrimination, and retaliation from the administrative staff for weeks prior to this event. In order to keep my job, I was put in situations that went against my values. This is exemplary when we look at the culture of fear and intimidation that is rampant, as well as how African-American children are being overlooked by the educational system and leaders. I'm here tonight hoping these issues will be addressed so that we may come to a resolution that can be brought forth for myself, the students, and the school system.
Caitlin Brackett, we had you in the queue, but you dropped off, and so we're asking that you please give that. Again, no cheering, no jeering in the room. Thank you. Dewan Robinson for two minutes, followed by Nathaniel Dyer. Dewan Robinson, if you make your way up to the front, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Evening, Board. Happy New Year. I was coming up here to also echo what my sister, Ms. Davis, said. It's a shame. We're circling this again in 2022 and '23 after we had the cheating scandal that kind of embarrassed APS and the whole country. And we have a majority Black sisters on the board and a Black sister losing her job. I think it's a shame. I had a meeting, me and Mr. Dyer, with the young lady that is over the Cluster at Maynard Jackson. I forget her name. When I spoke last time, she met me in the hallway. She's a disgrace to the APS Board, and I'm being serious with you. Lady, have no respect. She called from South Carolina, only been here two years. There was a lady that was there with her, had been a part of APS for 20-some years, did not speak, disregarding the principal, the Caucasian principal, that was fired for using the N-word. He then denied it, and she spoke for him the whole meeting, very disrespectful, did not let us speak and trying to tell us how to go. You haven't even been there long enough to know the culture, to be trying to tell people to shut up and listen. She's very disrespectful. And to the leadership, being born and raised here, being a graduate of Frederick Douglass, which I feel was the last leader that really valued children, was Dr. Butts. Everybody else we saw outside to bring in here, and Ms. Heron, Dr. Heron, you're one that I look at, that I believe that do care for students. Started me coming down here, being disrespectful and bringing a group down here. We wanted us to offer something different, if you wouldn't mind having someone to speak with me out there, but we need to have real partnership with APS, because everything has been done in the past. It's been relationships and friendship to the detriment of our kids. We have a lot of Black boys and girls that are out here in society that have not been educated properly in APS.
I'm sorry we reached a time boundary. All right, thank you. But if you have additional comments, if you submit that in writing, I'll make sure it gets to the appropriate people. Nathaniel Dyer, two minutes.
Pierre, you need to get rid of that three to, it used to be, policy was three to six minutes. And why you all think that two minutes is enough for the public is ridiculous. You know, you don't even have even a layover time. So it just shows that you don't want to hear the problems, but we have something for that through social media. Now, what you heard tonight is pretty much an example of the state of affairs that you all have created. Now, welcome to you, but you're coming into a mess. But I believe you have the power to maybe change it, bring some sense to these people. Because I'll tell you, it's like a broken record. Maynard Jackson told you about institutionalized racism going on over there for years. You don't want to hear it. And just like Dewan said, the representation over there is poor and pathetic. You got Ms. Davis. Now, I know other teachers who, and I see you standing up, looking like you're just the queen of everything, Ms. Collins. And I'm gonna tell you, you know, you're part of the problem. You have closed schools, now you're about to sell schools, and you know what happens behind that? Children suffer, communities suffer. You know, you need to reconsider and listen to the community. Two minutes is what you all give, and you think that's power to the people. And you see, the island that you all sit on is going to be destroyed, because you see, tonight is going to set the tone. Now, I came last month, and I said, I'm willing to work with you. Got no type of feedback or anything. So you know that means I had to go to destructive mode on you all. Now, you see, Ms. Heron, they can tell you, I've kept my hands off you. I haven't created a fly or anything. Isn't that right? But you see, now that's going to change. That's going to change. The social media component, everything, we're going to do some work. And you say, I'm looking for some five-star educators to come out, bus drivers, everybody. Come on and tell us what you want in this district to make it right for you and the children. I don't need your names or anything like that, because, hey, I already know what's going on. So we're going to take this school system back and have power to the children. Thank you.
For Paul McMurray, for Sabah Talib, for Caitlin Brackett, again, if you can hear us on Facebook, if you will submit your comments in writing, we'll ensure that the Board and Administration will have access to that. With that being said, Madam Chair, this concludes public comment.
So Paul and Caitlin weren't able. What about Sabah? Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gaither. And thank you, community members, for taking the time to speak with us this evening. We always appreciate your feedback and engagement with us. I want to note that our prerecorded remarks, which played while the Board was in executive session, can also be found on the APS TV YouTube channel for your reference. This month's remarks are narrated by our own representative District One Board Member, Katie Howard. So thank you so much, Katie, for narrating this month's remarks. Board Member Howard highlighted the upcoming Martha King Day Holiday and Day of Service Opportunities, National Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and specifically Human Trafficking Awareness Day, which is this Wednesday, January 11. Don't forget to wear blue to support and stand in solidarity with the victims of human trafficking and those who continue to work, continue the work to prevent it. And finally, Ms. Howard reminded the community about our Breakfast with the Board initiative, which is supported by our Student Advisory Council and will once again provide multiple engagement opportunities for us as a board to connect with students across all clusters and hear their perspectives this spring. Also, we welcomed our newly-appointed Board Member, Jessica Johnson, who filled the seat, the at-large Seat Nine seat during our afternoon work session meeting. But I want to reiterate that welcome for community members joining us this evening. Thank you. Welcome, Jessica. Dr. Heron, I'll make this brief, and so we are ready to hear your updates.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chairwoman. I want to provide a brief recap of our work session reports from earlier today. We heard four presentations. For our first presentation, we heard a performance and information technology update about our IT and data information group, presented by Dr. Matthew Smith, Chief Performance Officer, Mr. Femi Aina, Executive Director, Information Technology, and Mr. Joseph Austin, Executive Director, Data and Information Group. We heard updates about the progress made on many of our key performance initiatives. This presentation covered resources for students, IT infrastructure, supports for schools, technical and instructional, information for decision-making and security for student and employee data. The presenters reviewed the five-year technology plan, and we learned more about infrastructure, network security, student services, digital citizenship, and emergency connectivity funding. From the data information group, we heard about our progress with student outcomes-focused governance, goal monitoring, and also learned about updates and improvements to the tools we use to monitor student progress. Continuing with this update on the progress made towards some of our key performance initiatives for our second presentation, we heard an additional performance and information technology update, and this time about our Innovation Improvement and Redesign Group, presented by Dr. Matthew Smith, Chief Performance Officer, and Dr. Kevin Maxwell, Assistant Superintendent, Innovation Improvement and Redesign. The presentation provided updates about our ACEs review process, the future of ACEs, and additional information around improvement and innovation work this team is conducting across the district, including design thinking. Dr. Maxwell shared specifics about our many continuous improvement initiatives, updated us on tiered school improvement for school turnaround work, and highlighted some amazing new partnerships, such as the University of Virginia Learning Lab, partnership in the Douglas Cluster, our work with Kennesaw State University, and the Innovators Mindset Material, which has turned into a working group, and much more. For our third presentation, we heard our monthly financial update from Lisa Bracken, our Chief Financial Officer. Ms. Bracken provided information regarding current general fund financials and the fiscal year 2024 budget development process. For our fourth and final presentation, we focused on our sixth monthly Student Outcomes Focus Governance, or SOFG, discussion. Today's progress monitoring report was on interim goal 4.2 within Board Goal Four, which is college and career readiness. Atlanta Public Schools offers multiple paths for students to be college and career-ready. This monitoring report identifies progress on three out of the eight colleges, college and career readiness components defined by Board Goal Number Four. Our intention is for each high school student to work directly with their high school counselor and graduation coach to determine the best pathway based on their interests and post-secondary goals. Interim Goal 4.2 allows us to monitor progress towards students passing two AP or Advanced Placement exams, passing two international baccalaureate exams, or earning one dual enrollment credit. This goal cascades across ninth, 10th, and 11th grade to provide progress on our strategies used to support AP, IB, and dual enrollment at each of the grade levels. Also, I want to echo your welcome and sentiments, Chairwoman Collins, to our new Board Member, Ms. Johnson. Board Member Johnson, welcome, and we are excited to have you and to continue to work alongside with you. And finally, although we're striving not to add additional time to not, not to add additional time to the meetings now that our remarks are pre-recorded, sometimes we receive information that's pertinent for our scholars, families, and community members after we record those remarks. On that note, I want to briefly highlight an event happening on Sunday, January 15th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Best Academy, which is located at 1190, that's 1190 Northwest Drive, Northwest. Staff, students, and families of APS and high schools, we invite and encourage you, families of APS, middle and high schools, we invite and encourage you to attend the MLK Day event, Keep It 100, Protecting the Dreams of Our Youth. This free event will feature prominent keynote speakers and special guests, a speech visual, live entertainment, basketball, and gaming activities, free haircuts, and meal packaging service project benefiting those in need. I want to thank the event host, the Emerging 100 of Atlanta, which is the Young Professional Auxiliary of the 100 Black Men of Atlanta. They are working in coordination with our Board of Education and Student Advisory Council, and also with support from Target Corporate, from Target Corporation, Comcast, Microsoft, Gas South, Atlanta Police Foundation, and the At Promise Initiative, and lifting our voices. So a big thank you to everyone involved. Please note that you must RSVP to attend, and registration closes this Friday, so please check APS and Board of Education's social media for the link. And if you'd like to volunteer or support this event as a local corporate or community organization, you can register by way of the link or contact the Emerging 100 of Atlanta at emerging100atlanta@emerging100atlanta.org. And adults are welcome to bring your children or any young family members who may be interested in volunteering or participating in the youth-serving activities or attending, and don't forget to RSVP by this Friday. Thank you for the time to reference that. And just in closing, I would like to appreciate all of those who participated, showed up and supported the closeout of the superintendent's cluster chats that closed out this past week. I am grateful for not just the participation, but the robust feedback throughout our district, and look forward to following up. Board Chairwoman, that concludes my comments.
Great. Thank you so much, Dr. Heron. And now, would you please present tonight's consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I am pleased to submit consent agenda item numbers 5.1-A through 5.4-A. There are no items to call out this evening. And with that, I present consent agenda items 5.1-A through 5.4-A to the board for approval.
Great. Thank you so much. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items 5.1-A through 5.4-A? Y'all wanted to log in?
So move.
Oh, sorry. It's been properly moved by Jennifer McDonald, second.
Second.
By Katie Howard. I think we're all, give us one second. Yep. We are all logging in to take a vote.
Did yours come up?
Is everybody? Okay. Yep, give us one more second. Thank you so much. All right, the motion has been properly made by Board Member McDonald and second by Board Member Howard. We will now open it for a vote. Ms. Loggins didn't pop up for me, so, but I'm gonna vote yea on that. Thank you. It also doesn't look like it's showing up on the screen.
Yes. Okay, so now it's on our.
All right, while they are working on posting that, I will now, I will now open it up for discussion on agenda item 6.1, which is the Tumor Elementary and Payton Forest Elementary renovations, the facilities master plan, access property recommendations, and the Heritage Academy and Humphreys, Heritage Academy and Humphreys Elementary rezoning. Before I be, before, is okay, before I move into board comments, Dr. Heron, is it, can we have someone, you or someone from the team, just at least give an overview again for the, on this item, and then I'll open it up for.
Yes, ma'am. I'll have our Executive Director, Dan Drake, will come and speak, just to kind of give just an overview. And then if there are any additional comments or discussion, we'll proceed from there.
Yes, thank you so much.
Sure thing. Good evening, board members. Tonight, in front of us, we've got a three-part board agenda item. The first part is the recommendations for Tumor and Payton Forest to be renovations, and therefore no additions at those properties. The other piece is to declare 16 properties as surplus. And there's a list that's attached there. And then the third piece is a redistricting or modifications of both Heritage Academy and Humphreys Elementary's attended zones. Both, all three items are up for this, under this board agenda item. To give you a little bit of a background, with both the, all three of these items were part of the facilities master planning process, so we had Sizemore come in, went through first, then they developed that report for us, or that we, that presented to us this fall, presented a first read last month, ends up for a vote tonight.
And the Heritage Academy and Humphreys Elementary rezoning is based on the new development?
That's correct. That's the Habitat for Humanity Development. That's literally on the backside of the Humphreys Elementary School. It's currently zoned for heritage, and the recommendation is for that to be zoned to Humphreys. So that's, literally, there's gonna be a back gate to the, to the new development.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. I will now open up for discussion on agenda item 6.1 on these three topics. Aretha, oh, sorry, Tamara, then Aretha.
Okay, thank you. So I just have a clarifying question in terms of the process and where we are. So in terms of excess properties, my understanding is that the vote we're taking tonight is not saying what will happen to those properties, but we're taking the vote to open up the conversation that, so we can have a conversation with the community about what is the best use for this property. And there's a number of things that could happen from, you know, a wide continuum. So if someone could let me know if that is correct, as well as let the, the community know what this process looks like and, and what the next step would be.
Madam Vice Chairwoman, I will confirm that that is correct, but then I will also defer, just for a little bit of exploration around what next steps would look like. You are correct relative to your question. Yes, Mr. Drake.
Yes. So the process that we did, we did a stepwise process where we have 47, what we call potentially excess properties. We went through the process with Sizemore's recommendations, and then are confirming a portion of them, and then modifying those for a first read. That those, that the six, the, the list of the 16 properties for disposal are just the very first step, and it's just declaring them surplus. And that disposal could mean, it could be sold. It could also mean that we retain property and have a longer-term lease on that property as well. At this point, we're just saying that we do not need it for active school purposes. So as far as the next step, just, just as a reminder, any property that's on that list, this is, they will have to come back to the board for approval for any type of either long-term lease or, or actual sale of the property. So this is not the first, this is not the last time this will be brought to the board, is actually the very first time. We are, still have not fully developed out our process and priorities. We did get priorities from the board as far as what are the themes that we want to look at for both the properties that are on the surplus list and for those that are on the hold list. And so, once we develop that process, we'll be coming back to the board with more details as far as which priorities, which properties will be coming back of the 16 for either those next steps. And so, we've got a little bit more work on our end now that we've gotten those priorities from the board at the, at the November 10th board retreat.
And community engagement is a part of that next process?
I'm sorry, yes. For every property, before we bring it back to the board, there would be community engagement for each specific property.
Thanks. Katie, you had it? Okay. Oh, so we'll take general questions since it's on this one, and then we'll go to Tamara.
Okay. Just, so just on the backend of that, just for the edification of everyone listening, because, you know, we have had community members being very vocal about just preferences and what they choose. Can you give just a brief overview of what that community engagement looks like? So they can expect, you know, they can understand what to expect.
Yeah, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be honest, we have not developed that communication. That's what we will be doing with both, with our, our community engagement, our, our department as well as well. So that's, I'm gonna be honest, that has not been fully developed yet.
That's fine, but it'll be forthcoming. So as long as we're just
Absolutely.
over-communicating, if, if there was a way we could over-communicate so that the people that have really spent a lot of time coming down here sharing their views could understand what that looks like, that would be great.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you. I was excited when we started, you know, this portion of the facilities master plan a few months ago, you know, trying to get, you know, more clarification and more defined processes around this, because I think some of the angst that you feel is people just not knowing what things are. So to me, you know, hearing what you said, I was excited. I thought we would get all that done, you know, before we launched into something like this. And so, and I've said this in multiple meetings, multiple retreats, that, you know, coming up with a very defined, you know, not, of course, open, but, you know, a fairly defined process whereby stakeholders can know what to expect. You know, what does it mean when you declare something surplus? What are the next steps? How will they be engaged? How will the public be notified? So to me, you know, I'm not questioning your entire list, you know, that I have questions about some things, but, you know, I think that doing a surplus declaration before we finish doing our work is putting the cart before the horse. That should surprise no one who's listened to me talk about that. You know, it fuels speculation and fear that can be avoided. You know, my position continues to be, as you've heard me say before, that I think as a public institution, we have too simplistic an approach in the past for how we best utilize our public assets for the benefit of the citizens and the communities in this city. We've not typically thought of ourselves as playing a role in community development plans. You know, we've had a very limited repertoire of what we do with our properties. But we have recently devised, in a pretty broad way, our board policy, DO, that governs the disposition of surplus properties. And disposition means what you do with it. You could also call it dispossession, right? So no longer holding on to it. But we have not yet articulated a process for the public, you know, whereby they would understand what does community engagement mean? And, you know, not just the communities, but any interested parties, all the stakeholders. And that, to me, should be done before we come to any conclusion that a property, a public asset, is disposable or potentially disposable. Because when we choose to sell, our city has fewer public assets for us to bring to the table, to get creative with, for the purpose of meeting the needs of our communities and families. You've heard me say that, you know, they're not making any more land. I mean, don't get me wrong, there will be occasions where we conclude that selling a property is in the best interest. But I think part of the friction we're seeing play, playing out is that stakeholders don't understand what the next steps are, and in the absence of that, they create their own assumptions. And I just think that we need to finish our work before we crack open all of, all of the angst.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Tamara. Yeah, I think there's a lot that, I think there's a lot that is happening here. And, and I appreciate, I appreciate the administration for clarifying what sur, what surplus is. But I also want to reiterate whether, what we've been in the process. We haven't been in this process for the last few months. We have been in this process for the last few years. We have not embarked on a facility master plan of this, of this, this latitude in 21 years. We have engaged in various community meetings and conversations alone the last, I know for a fact, from me personally, being in that, being in the communities, that I, that I'm hearing voices over, at least for the last three to four years. And I know we have new board members that have joined us, have also have heard those conversations and been a part of those conversations. I struggle with this, I struggle with the emotional part that is happening here. And oftentimes, when emotions become so tainted, become so enthralled in part of, so, so strong and so invested in the, the work, we miss the objectivity of what we're trying to do. We're looking at, and so, if, if the argument was for all the, every 16, all 16 properties throughout the city, I would give pause and reconsideration. I know there is one property in particular, but that property on the 16 is probably one of the ones that's been surplus, and it has added, and has been surplus for the longest. This will be the 19th year. Just over the last year and a half alone, there were over a dozen meetings, and we alone sat through five retreats and came up with a very objective criteria to remove any kind of subjectivity or emotional state of making a decision. And I'm looking where we landed on, a criteria of weighting, the utilization of each cluster, and the property that we're talking about, the cluster is already underutilized. So much so, I went to a community meeting, and individuals had audacity to criticize our schools, but never set foot in, never set foot in our schools. And that's concerning, that's concerning for me. Also, we talked, we, so we, we had four criterias, the utilization of each cluster, the risk hazard, risk hazards that we've heard over the last few years, the property size, and this notion that, are we holding, are we holding on to property of certain sizes that we truly feel that we may not need the, the benefit of building a school or a facility on, but we can, with the community, community thought and feedback, do something amazing. And I became a believer of that by seeing what we did with the Adair Park School. And I also saw that as a belief of what, you know, I also became a believer seeing that as we brought vacant, vacant schools that have been vacant, like the Howard Middle School, back online where population was bursting. And then we also looked at proximity, where, where the, where this, these vacant schools and surplus properties are in relation to some of our, to some, to our schools. We know in that area, we have Dobbs Elementary, Slater, and if I'm missing another elementary school in that area, please, you know, please let me know. But what we do know, there is opportunity for our communities and our, that growing community, to still support our schools, to still be investing in our schools, and utilization 65% and under, which we went into a very which we went into a very detailed process. I just want, I give it pause just thinking about, and I, and I understand, I understand the conversation and the feedback on both ends. And the hurtful part of it is seeing how this dialogue is dividing, is, is dividing a community where I truly feel there's an amazing opportunity of unification that can happen around thinking about something amazing that could happen. And if it's an early learning, if it's an early learning track, that, that, that also could be, as I think about how we repurpose Easter Seals that's in the old Sylvan Middle School building. So there's a plethora of opportunities that are available, but what I cannot support is for us as a school system to continue to add blight to our community. And every year, we get the lit, we, we get, we, we, you know, every year, we hear about what's happening, and it's just not Lakewood. It is other properties throughout the, it's other properties throughout the city. But what I can assure you and what I can guarantee you is that we will make sure the community is, continue to be included. This is not the first. Because I've, I've been at the, I've been at those meetings. I've been at the conversations. I sat down when the NPU created the, the community development plan that they wanted to see four years ago. I've, I've been there. So this notion as if there has not been any community engagement, and even with the new residents had, that have come into that area, I've alr, I know me personally have invested time to be there for at least three meetings. And so I don't want it to be this notion as if APS and this board is moving with no, with no consideration or recognition of the community feedback or voice in mind, because that is not how we operate. And I know every last one of us, even those that, even those of us that don't even live in that area, we are vested in making sure, in making sure of that. And so I wanted to put that out there to at least give the overview of all the work that we've done, because it's been, it has been a commitment of time, energy, conversations, but more importantly, the exciting part of, 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 of visionary thinking and ideation, and whether it is the, the Atlanta Preservation Center, designated historic, I've learned so much in these, in this process over the, the last few years, and even over the last few months, that I do want to provide that, oh, I do want to provide that overview, um, for the public and the commitment that we have, even those of us that's been on the board and those that have joined, that have joined us. And I appreciate your question, Aretha, just clarifying what that means to just, to designate it as surplus at this moment. And, and Mr. Drake for also clarifying that this is, that this, we will, there will be more dialogue and conversations about this. But I do want to pu- put that out there. Um, any board? Tamara, and then I think-
Yeah, if, uh, my comments were not about any specific piece of property. Um, I, I'm, and I, I, I think you're right. You know, I think a lot of this could have been avoidable if we just finished, finished what we were doing before we took it up. You know, because then people wouldn't be sitting in, you know, not know, in a state of not knowing. That's, that's, that's my position.
Katie, do you want to hit? Oh, no, yeah.
No, I think you outlined it well, um, Chair Collins. And I appreciate your history, um, and the fact that we're also at this point with FMP. I really, again, appreciate the work of Mr. Drake, Mr. Hoskins, the partners who've come in and presented, like APC and others. Um, and during the retreat, I just want to highlight again, or not again, or make sure we highlight specifically, some of the priorities the board outlined, that they would like to see, um, properties deemed excess if we decide to sell them or lease or what have you. The priorities around things that, this board I know in the past, this board and then the boards previous have outlined through things like the Housing Commission, the Joint Housing Commission with the city, um, priorities around potential uses. Um, Mr. Drake, do you have those priorities? I know you had us go through an exercise. If you could share those, so I make sure I don't miss any of them?
That's right. Um, we, we had a, we, we provided some priorities, and, and the board ranked the top three were all tied at six-point-three affordable housing, community resources for arts and nonprofits, and early learning, and those are at six-point-three. Eliminate Blight was number si, was, was second place as a six. Historic preservation. And then beyond that was green space and workforce development. Those are the items.
Thank you. And I commit, that I'm committed to those, and I, our colleagues have spoken as well through that exercise, that those are priorities for us as a board that we've outlined them and given them to you all as facilities and to the superintendent and team. Um, and I'm looking forward to when the time presents itself, if you all decide to move forward if we deem these properties excess around, um, action, be it sale, lease, around going back out to the community. I'm very appreciative of everyone in this room who's been very, um, engaged and thoughtful around what they see would benefit their community best. Um, we also know that the blight and sitting vacant and these buildings potentially deteriorating is not helpful for the community, and they could be activated, um, and preserved and put to use for something that does absolutely benefit the community. Alongside with that, the continual investment and new investment of new families moving in, in the current schools, um, in these areas, because we have gone through, again, more than an exercise with consultants to deem that we do not need these buildings currently at this point, um, for students, that we have room for growth. And looking, I know, since Lakewood Heights is, um, a property that people have come to speak about, um, I appreciated being at a recent meeting and hearing from families who have children at Carver, even though this is actually in the South Atlanta cluster. But of course, going into Slater, um, Dobbs Elementary, and then also Thomasville Heights Elementary. I am looking forward to that school reopening, and knowing there is room for growth there really excites me. Um, and do want to touch on quickly the fact that we're even having, or have had engagement around temporary uses of that property, and looking forward to having more conversation with the community around that. All to say that I know we have gone out into the community on numerous occasions, I look forward to doing it, um, at an even deeper level, should we decide to sell these properties. So thank you again for clarifying the process, and I'm certainly available, I know, to the community I serve as well as anyone throughout the system to talk about this process more as we move forward. So thank you again for all the hard work, and appreciate, um, the questions that have been asked, and particularly, I, Board Chair Collins, again, sharing your history with an example of one that has been utilized with community input, Adair Park. So thank you all.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Norvell.
Sure, I just wanted, uh, didn't want to leave this evening without clarifying community engagement or confusion about community engagement going forward. We are guided by the policy that the board set as part of facilities master planning in November. And that policy states, so that the community can hear as well, that the board will typically review existing government redevelopment plans and seek review and comment from the community, normally through the neighborhood planning unit for the area in which the property is located before selling or disposing of a surplus property to another entity. And so our community engagement is guided by that policy. So once the facilities process starts on taking, phasing or choosing a property, we'll then work with the neighborhood planning unit to receive feedback prior to anything happening with that facility as outlined in the board policy.
Thank you.
Any other, um, thoughts, questions, or, uh, feedback? All right, I will now, uh, see if there's a motion to approve Item 6.1, Tumor Elementary and Payton Forest Elementary renovations, the facilities master plan access property recommendations, and Heritage Academy and Humphreys Elementary rezoning.
So moved.
Okay, it has been properly moved by Cynthia Briscoe Brown. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly seconded by Erica Mitchell. All, and, um, we will now open up for a vote. Okay. Thank you. All right, now I will open it up for discussion on Agenda Item 7.1A, a resolution authorizing the Atlanta Board of Education to consent to certain tax extinguishments. Mr. Gaither, is there any additional information?
I was gonna actually look over to our General Counsel. This is part of the normal process we've done with-
Yes.
-the land bank authority.
That's correct. The board is, um, undertaking this process several times in the past.
Yeah, agreed. Is there a motion to approve the, um, Agenda Item 7.1?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved by Cynthia Briscoe Brown, seconded by Erica Mitchell. We will now open it for a vote. Thank you. Madam General Counsel, is there a need for the board to report out from executive session?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, the board needs to take action on four items.
Okay.
Um, first, I request a motion that the Atlanta Board of Education uphold the hearing officer's decision in student appeal number 2023-01.
So moved.
It has been properly moved by Board Member Cynthia Briscoe Brown, seconded by Aretha Baldwin. We will now open it up for a vote. Thank you.
For student appeal 2023-02, I request a motion that the Atlanta Board of Education uphold the hearing officer's findings of fact and recommendations.
So moved. Second.
Okay, properly moved by Tamara Jones, seconded by Cynthia Briscoe Brown. We will now open it up for a vote.
For student appeal 2023-03, I request a motion that the Atlanta Board of Education overturn the hearing officer's findings of fact and recommendations.
So moved.
Second. Okay, properly moved by Jennifer McDonald, seconded by Aretha Baldwin. So you want to do a voice phone? Okay.
Um, yes.
Thanks, Tamara.
And in student appeal number 2023-04, I request a motion that the Atlanta Board of Education uphold the hearing officer's findings of fact and recommendations.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's properly moved by Jennifer McDonald, seconded by Cynthia Briscoe Brown. We will now open up for a vote.
Um, yes.
Vote's not on, no. Okay. Thank you. All right. At this time, I invite board members to report out from their committees or on recent activities. Do we have any report out from board committees confer, or conferences? All right. Hearing none, I do want to give, before we adjourn, I do want to give our newest board member, Jessica Johnson, a space if you want to say any, um, few words before we close out. You have successfully completed your first board meeting.
It's been a whirlwind, but I am excited to be a part. Oh, yeah, I just said it's been a whirlwind, but I'm excited to be on board.
Yes. And so with that, the last thing, you will, you, we will be, um, I will be appointing you to the Budget Commission as well to join Michelle and Cynthia Briscoe Brown as we will, um, start that, that process soon. With that being said, my great colleagues, ooh, seven-twenty-five, you guys. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Okay, properly moved by Jennifer McDonald, seconded by Aretha Baldwin. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned and go Dawgs. Yes.